I call the regular meeting of the Eugene School Board to order on Wednesday, March 15th, 2023 at 7:03 PM. Board members in attendance this evening are Alicia Hayes, Gordon Leifer, Judy Newman, Kirpi Hasijah Kaufman, Michelle Shu, and myself, Maya Rabasa. Please join Superintendent Dye as he leads us in the flag salute.
My pleasure, lady.
To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all!
Now I will read the land acknowledgements. The Eugene School Board would like to acknowledge that our institution sits on the homelands of the Kalaua people. In the treaties of 1851 and 1854 to 1855, and the subsequent forced removals of many Indian people from western Oregon, some of the Kalaua were moved to the Grand Ronde Reservation, and some were moved to the Siletz Reservation. It is important to note that all of Lane County was and continues to be an important trading and gathering area for camas and other resources. During the Restoration Era from 1977 to 1989, Lane County was designated as the service area for the Confederate tribes of Kus, Lower Unqwa, and Tsaihisswa Indians, the Confederate tribes of Grand Ronde Indians, the Confederate tribes of Siletz Indians, the Kokewell Indian tribe, and the Cow Creek Band of Unqwa Indians. Eugene School District 4J acknowledges that the descendants of original and service-area inhabitants of this land are still here today. They are thriving members of our schools and our communities. Countless members of other tribes now also call our community and schools their home. We wish to thank those original stewards of this land. We, as fellow stewards of this land, wish to remember that we need to take good care of this land and take good care of all the members of our school district community. We are shaking our agenda up a little bit and moving our reports from high school representatives up to the top. So without further ado, I will turn it over to the high school representatives. Do I have someone who'd like to go first? Parker?
Hi, I am Parker Anderson. I'm the school board representative for North Eugene High School. There's been a lot of stress at the end of the trimester and finals happening for a lot of students. And I know it'll be nice for everyone to have this longer weekend to wind down a bit before we start our new classes at the beginning of next week. Our acting class just finished their production of Sleepy Hollow, which went very well, and they're excited to now be beginning a production of Adam's Family, which will be in the spring. Key Club is putting on a beach bash dance that will be tomorrow night, and that a lot of the school is very excited for. On a slightly heavier note, there remains some frustration among the school relating to the lack of response from our school admin when issues are made aware to them from the students and when things are brought to them in confidence and hopes that they'll be able to. Thank you.
Thank you, Parker. Chaz?
I am Sheldon's student representative. Sheldon participated in a Japanese cultural exchange earlier this week. Twenty students were welcomed to our school with performances from our jazz band and Dubliners and shared aspects of their culture with our students. We sent six student representatives to Abbott's Spotlight to share with district employees the importance of Abbott and how it prepares our students for success outside of high school. Our dance team is going to state and will have a send-off showcasing their dances and drills. Our choir program had a successful and well-tended concert last Tuesday and is preparing for the first choir and band tour to Seattle during spring break. This tour will include a musical exchange with a local high school and a clinic from University of Washington's Director of Oral Studies. Our four-streets CTE program has had extreme success and exciting students. They've had a very successful and educational field trip that introduced students into the field. There have been continuing discussions and concerns surrounding mental health resources. Currently, our ASP is working on creating a self-referral form so students can have greater access to the resources we do have available within our schools. Students have appreciated our growing credit recovery program, Extended Day, that is helping students achieve their graduation goals. Finally, I would like to point out something that recently comes to the attention of Sheldon's Gender Sexuality Alliance. A group of students were working on a final project concerning transphobia in sports. During their research, they found that the policies in place at 4J and Sheldon are out of date. Sheldon's policies were last updated in 2019, and 4J's were last updated in 2016. Since then, the ODEs published new guidelines where they phase out outdated language and policies. I urge the school board to reexamine these policies to keep our athletics safe and equitable for all students, no matter gender identity. Thank you.
Thanks, Chaz. Rory?
Hi, my name is Rory Young. I'm the student representative for South Dean High School. In the past two weeks, we haven't had that many school events, but next week, we're going to have a South Spirit Showdown, a local year competition during classes to find out who has the most spirit. The whole school will have many games and activities, and it will all culminate to an assembly on Friday, March 34th. Today, I would like to use my time to discuss the previous South Dean Advisory topic, which was Aaron's Law. Aaron's Law is a critical section that needs to be presented at all grade levels. However, many South students took issue with how it's presented. As high schoolers, we understand that the way the law is taught should be different in lower grades. However, there is a point that is most definitely crossed in high school, if not earlier, where you should not oversimplify the meaning of Aaron's Law. In the advisory presentation two weeks ago, as a way to present Aaron's Law, the accompanying slides give the story of Cinderella as an example. Also, the slides on power imbalance talk about emotional depth and how one person could have more emotional awareness than another. As a reminder, Aaron's Law was created. It is required to be taught at schools because it teaches kids how to prevent sexual abuse and exploitation. At a high school level, when these topics are incredibly relevant, we must be able to distinguish the true meaning of the law, which cannot be done with these generalized scenarios. The relationship with your teacher is much different in high school than in previous grades. Friendships or intimate relationships now bridge different classrooms, and they are very common. Both of these are fundamental reasons why this topic must be discussed in the high school environment. The presentation as a whole never mentioned anything that was closely remotely close to what could actually be faced, like between a student and another student, a student and a friend's parent, a student and a teacher, or a student and their own parent. These are real experiences from real people. They are not fictional, and they have happened and they have continued to happen. They need to be brought to light, not pushed aside as if they did not exist. In fact, the entire presentation seemed to try to avoid real scenarios of power leaks. This can't be the case because Aaron's Law is all about power. What power you have, what power you don't have, what powers others have, and how to recognize when power is being used against you. Aaron's Law is intended to help children, teachers, and parents in understanding and prevent sexual abuse. This cannot be achieved at the high school level if you do not accurately discuss Aaron's Law or if you haven't had a real life experience of where it comes from. You're not asking for explicit retelling. Instead, you request that the crucial point that are stated in Aaron's Law are not sugar-coated and simplified to the point that they are not true for actual meaning, therefore not actually educated and spreading the words. Thank you.
Rory. Ren, if your hand is raised?
I'm really nervous right now, so I apologize if my voice is shaky again. Hi, I'm Ren Washington, and I'm the student representative for EOA. I've been extremely appreciative of the opportunity to be a student rep. However, it is difficult considering I'm online. It's actually pretty hard to get information on all the negative nooks and crannies they need fixing. Some of what makes this more challenging is that the majority of students have barriers to focusing and communication and are needing to work on classes, their job, or help with family. I find the other student reps so admirable, want to hear them speaking out for their school and addressing both the issues as well as the achievements. It makes me wonder what I can do better for both the students and myself. I wish to improve more than just EOA, but the school district in general and how we go about learning and teaching. One of the responses I got from my student survey that I strongly agree with is the guilt that students feel. Students want to do their best, but there will always be that negative voice in one's head telling them that they aren't, and sometimes a bad grade just locks those thoughts in. We live in a cruel, unjust, and judgmental society, especially for students with mental issues and disabilities, where often adults tell us and reinforce that results are all that matters, where our worth is strongly based on our grades, our goals, and what we have to offer the real world, which is an outdated cultural norm. We live in a society that cares only for what we can produce, and our mental, physical, and emotional health doesn't matter. In my personal opinion, school is where this toxicity begins. Grades alone are one of the main root causes of depression, stress, and anxiety because it adds on constant pressure to pass any and all classes, which leads to burnout in the middle of the year, and the feeling of not knowing what you're learning or why you are learning it. I read that a study done by Education Week reports that ditching traditional letter grades reduces stress levels and competition among students, levels the playing fields for less advantaged students, and encourages them to explore knowledge and take ownership of their own learning. School is meant to be a place of growth, support, dreams, and opportunities. So what can we, as a community, do to fix this predicament? We are all trying our absolute best to make this a more positive environment. Students need teachers and staff to be more understanding, to let them know that they are important, to be more respectful and considerate of how they are feeling, and let them know that they can work at their own pace. Hard work and meeting goals can still be important, but we need to do it by meeting the younger generation halfway. We focus on helping them to find solutions that will help them reach their goals and pass school without feeling shame or having to put bettering their mental health on pause. That is the same support my teacher gave me when I stopped going to my classes altogether, and it really helped me care about myself and my future again. And I will always be grateful for that and for her because I was not in a great place, but there are definitely some teachers here that will act as the strong pillar of support. If all students received this from every teacher, then it would very well decrease the negative emotions and increase resilience. Students are likely to improve their well-being. The support and encouragement from teachers would help students find a sense of belonging. They will have both short and long-term goals, and they can work towards every achievement. Work towards, and every achievement will feel like a massive success. According to Inner Drive, this will continue to motivate students and push them to be resilient in even the most difficult of times, with research suggesting that a growth mindset intervention is especially useful for struggling students, and I know this too personally to be true.
Thank you, Ren. Batatin?
Hi, everyone. My name is Batatin Smahu, and I am the student representative of Churchill High School. Today, I'll be talking about how students are feeling and lots of different things. So today... Our prom is coming up, and it's on the 22nd of April. We're really excited about that. And then last Friday, our choir and band put on an assembly for us, and it was really good. We all enjoyed it. And just yesterday, they had their first, or they had their performance for the community and parents, and it went really well. And our spring sports have started. Spring sports have begun, and many students, athletes, have been utilizing our Churchill Clinic, Health Clinic, to receive their sport physicals. And then the last thing I would like to talk about today is regarding our situation at CHS. Many students and families have been displayed. Lots of feelings, and the assignment given by a health teacher at our school, there are big emotions, and the front office people have been finding lots of phone calls from people in our school and outside of the state. Our principal, the first day that this happened, our principal released a statement, putting some information on, for our families out there. We're just hoping that the district will make a statement soon and share with the knowledge with the community.
Thank you, Batatin. For those who don't attend our meetings, typically, we usually do the ASL applause, but we can make exceptions for students because students... Are there any... I believe that's all of our students with us today. So I will move on to the agenda, and the first item on the agenda is an agenda review. Are there any questions, changes, or corrections to the agenda anyone would like to request? Gordon?
This is based on our discussion during the discussion. I had an action item. It would direct the superintendent to work with members of the North Region Subcommittee to schedule meetings, community meetings, and process proposals developed by district staff for possible options for construction or renovation of the Kelly YG Building.
Are there any objections? I can't see everyone on screen, so if you're on the screen and you have an objection, please speak up verbally. Are there any objections to adding this action item?
There's some hands.
Yeah.
No, my hands were up for the changes in agenda, not for objection.
Yeah. That's why I'm supposed to speak up, but if you are having your hand raised, definitely speak up. Otherwise, we'll add action item without...
To add something to the agenda? To what Gordon just said?
Say that one more time, Rowan.
I'm sorry, I missed a little bit of what you said. Was it that you're asking if people are agreeing to add that to the agenda tonight?
I'm asking if anybody objects to adding that tonight?
Only thing I object to is that we have a huge agenda that I don't know if we'll get to everything, so that's the only thing I'm concerned about.
So are you objecting and want to have a motion and conversation about it, or are you...
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna propose removing something I had, so I know Robert's Rules doesn't allow for this kind of conversation, but I'm just saying, perhaps we can all think about if we're going to add something that we're removing something as well. Thank you.
So if there are no objections, we will go ahead and add this item as an action item? I'm sorry. Objections are reserved for the board. I should note for record-keeping purposes that Laurel or Work is now in attendance in the minutes. Judy Newman, you had your hand raised next?
Yeah. I just want to pull items three and four from the consent agenda and just put them for voting for an item for action.
I believe that you pulled those when we get to the consent agenda.
Okay, we've got it both ways. I can do it then, sure. I'm glad to.
I think that's the way that we do that. Laurel? You're muted.
I wanted to ask that the minutes be looked at for... Sorry, I have everything written down. February 1st, out of the consent agenda, but you want me to wait until that you mention the consent agenda, is that correct?
The way that... Yeah, the way that we handle the consent agendas, you pull an item from the consent agenda when we get...
Okay. I'll do that then. The other thing I'd like to move, and I don't have the number in front of me, is I had asked to bring Matrix to the meeting, and I would like that to be postponed to the next meeting.
Are there any objections? Is this the conversation about the criteria for establishing policy goals and other course business, Laurel?
It was about, it should be about, and I'm sorry, I haven't had to, I couldn't get through all 220 pages of the agenda today while I was working and such. So I, as far as I understand, it is, what I asked to be brought to was the Matrix for... I'm sorry, I need to go back and look at it. I think that's what we were talking about, what you said, but I will clarify that in a moment if anybody else wants to go first.
Kirpi?
Hello. I am very unwell tonight, so I was hoping we may be able to move to have the items for action immediately after the consent agenda, if that's possible.
Are there any objections to moving the action items directly following the consent agenda? I can't see everyone, so if you do have an objection and you're on the screen, please speak up. Okay? Without objection, we'll move the action items up back in the consent agenda. Are there any other requests for changes in the agenda? Okay. In that case, we move on to the next item on the agenda, which is introduction of guests and superintendent's report. Superintendent Dye, you have the floor.
Evening, members of the board, those in the audience and those in the listening audience. Tonight, I'll keep my comments short and focused. Meeting here this evening, and those tuning in are interested in hearing more information or sharing their opinions regarding the human sexuality assignment from Churchill High School and subsequent rumors about additional concerning lessons. Here in Eugene School District 4J, we have long traditions of prioritizing site-based decision-making, academic freedom, but with effective administrative oversight. There were failures in our practices for this particular instance. What I can share is that following an initial internal review, we've identified shortcomings that allowed for the delivery of this lesson, one that the district does not recommend be delivered again. To be clear, the teacher did not create that lesson themselves. The assignment and question is pulled directly from the Our Whole Lives Sexuality Education from grades 10 through 12. Page 90. There are additional rumors of spinning wheels with salacious acts that have not been substantiated or reflected in the materials the teachers used.
I'm gonna ask the audience to refrain from commenting while the superintendent is speaking.
We have been able to confirm an online virtual randomizer wheel with various non-sexual activities on it was utilized when following the Our Whole Lives lesson on page 172. When the curriculum is adopted, our curriculum team provides our faculty with guidance around what lessons align with state standards and provides tools on how those can be applied. Ultimately, we rely on the professional judgment of our educators to utilize the curriculum as tools in their classroom. We have found that in this case, there was inadequate oversight and supports around the standards requiring the best methods to meet those standards by relying on supplemental lessons rather than following the Our Whole Lives curriculum text verbatim. We have determined thus far, what we have determined thus far is that we do not have record of other classes using this lesson, and will make it clear to our health educators that this is not a lesson the district endorses or supports delivering. As the district is in the process of a curriculum review and new adoption, that lesson will not be used again. Moving forward, our district will ensure that our faculty understand and follow district policy and state law by providing families information about health curriculum, which will now include clear unit information to allow for informed decision-making for all families on their students' participation in some or all of the curriculum. We will also ensure effective administrative oversight and support with the teachers needing to complete that task. At this time, I'd like to thank those that have shared their concerns with us. The district shares these concerns and immediately acted to address concerns, so that we will immediately act in the future to address further concern, so that we ensure situations like this are not repeated. Thank you.
I'm going to ask again that folks refrain from speaking. Unfortunately, this is in the time for back and forth, and I know how frustrating that is, but for us to get through our really long agenda, we need to move along. Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is items raised by the audience. We recognize that there is a large number of people who would like to speak and a limited number of slots. We typically accept 10 speakers. I would like to propose to our board that without objection, we allow folks to fill out a speaker... Form, I'm sorry. And we will select at random five additional speakers. This will mean that speakers will only have two minutes to speak instead of the typical three. I'm sorry. This is considered disruptive of the meeting. This is a decision for the board, and we can make the decision. I appreciate that.
I second your motion, Maya.
You should listen to us.
I'm gonna ask you to refrain from disrupting the meeting. Unfortunately, if you continue, you'll have to leave. And I don't want that. I want you to be part of this meeting. Are there any objections to adding more speakers?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. This isn't, this isn't a conversation.
There should be a vote of the board, so let's vote on it.
I, we can do this without objection unless there's an objection. I say that we just move on. Are there any objections?
Yeah.
Okay. So in that case, anybody who has not had a chance to fill out a form, please do so and give that form to Ms. McKim. In the meantime, we will get started with the Schedule 10. The reason that we are doing this is to allow for more people to have voice. In the past, when we've had meetings where there has been a strong interest in speaking, this has been the tradition for the past several decades until the pandemic hit and we went online. So this is the typical practice, and this was an attempt to hear from more members of the community. Otherwise, we will only hear from 10, and they'll get their three minutes. We did make up our mind, and again, it's not a conversation. Not asking a question. Debbie, do you have any, did anybody?
We have six people.
There are six people that would like to speak. In that case, Debbie, I will share the parameters of our public comment period, and then we will get started. The school board receives written comments by email at board@4j.lane.edu and sets aside time in each regular board meeting to hear public comment. Community members can sign up to speak to the board by submitting their request online at 4j.lane.edu/board/publiccomments or contact the superintendent's office. The deadline is the Monday before each meeting. Individual speakers are limited to two minutes and cannot give their time to another speaker. A timer will count up, indicating when the speaker's time is up. Speakers may offer objective comments or criticism about district operations and programs. For complaints about individuals, including district staff or board members, the district has a board policy and complaint process. Please contact the superintendent's office at 541-790-7707 for more information about submitting a formal complaint. Please extend the same courtesy to members of the community. Please keep in mind the time limit and the expectation of behavior. As chair, I'm in charge of maintaining order in this meeting, and we'll call recess if our meeting is disrupted. This includes interrupting other speakers. Debbie, will you introduce our first speaker?
Thank you, Sherabasa. Our first speaker tonight is Abby Stilly. Thank you, Sherabasa. Our first speaker tonight is Abby Stilly.
Abby, before you begin, I just want to check in with Ms. McKim. Do we have the timer working tonight?
Maya?
Yes?
I'm sorry to interrupt, but can you raise the camera on the presentation table, just so we get the face? Thank you very much.
Okay, Abby, unfortunately, you won't have the visual cue of the timer. I will set my timer, and when it goes off, if you could do your best to wrap up. We won't stop you immediately, but we hope that you take into consideration wanting to hear from as many members of the community as possible.
Absolutely. Well, good evening. I'm Abby Stilly. I'm the parent of a student at Kelly Middle School, and I'm here because Kelly parents have not been encouraged to attend or have been notified about the North Region planning meetings. It's clear from watching the recorded meetings, though, and looking at the data and talking to students that the district is not providing an equitable education experience at this point for that school. One example is the lack of a library. The library at Kelly is used for many things due to lack of space, but probably we used as a library. Students at Kelly have checked out 664 books this year. At Madison, a similarly sized school, students have checked out 1,892. The difference? Madison has a library staff, as does every other middle school in the district. Kelly has not a library staff and does not have a dedicated library space. At a school where more than 60% of the students aren't meeting grade-level expectations in English, it really seems to me like we should prioritize books and reading. We asked why Kelly students can't have elective standards to other middle schools like theater, woodshop, or home ec. We asked why Kelly students can't have enrichment activities like robotics or OBOB. Every time, we are told the same thing. There isn't space, there isn't funding, and there isn't staff to do it. But other schools in the district managed to come up with those three things. I believe that the school district is judged by how it treats the students who are struggling the most. Kelly consistently ranks lowest in test scores, as I referenced in the infographic I sent the board yesterday. Decisions the school board has made and will make soon play a role in shaping the future of these students. Something isn't right here when our students who should be benefiting from the most resources the district has to offer are getting the least. That's not how I understand equity. I want you to consider foremost not the ever diminishing amount of funding left in the bond, but what an equitable education experience for students at Kelly would look like. And please find a way to make that happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Stilly. Our next speaker tonight is Michael Donovan.
Michael, the situation with the timer is the same, so I'll just put my timer on, and when we get to the end, I hope that you're able to find a way to wrap it up. I apologize for the shifts.
Thank you for the opportunity for public comment. I am one of many community members that must speak out about the curriculum that has been allowed in Eugene Public Schools and the lack of public review by its leaders. When it was finally made public last week that the students within Eugene Public Schools were subjugated to a sexual fantasy assignment, I, along with many community members, were left in utter shock, outraged that students were not protected, and disgusted that any public employee involved with harvesting sexual fantasies from minors were still employed by the district. It's hard to turn the other cheek when the curriculum implemented by the Eugene Public School leaves students in a vulnerable position of feeling violated, embarrassed, and taken advantage of. When I look around at organizations within this community, if a manager or supervisor made one comment, even remotely close to that, they would be terminated on the spot. Yet, the people at Churchill High School, a leader in position of power, not only asked students about their private sexual fantasies, but required minors, some as young as 15, to document and upload their sexual fantasies in writing as a graded assignment. Sadly, they do not have the same protections that an adult professional has. Equally disturbing is the lack of public condemnation prior to tonight from district leaders, or even a simple apology to those students. With the exception of Board Member Gordon, thank you for speaking up, the silence of those in power is deafening. The silence leaves a door of moral bankruptcy wide open for students and parents to wonder who's there to protect them, who's there to stand up for them. I can only come to two things. Either the leaders were okay with this curriculum before it became public, or the leaders in this district are too cowardly to stand up through the bureaucracy and send a clear message to our youth that they have their back. I urge this board to adopt a policy that safeguards our students and holds district employees accountable for abuses of power when it involves a minor. There is a war being waged for the youth of America and its hearts and minds and spirits. I urge you, protect our students. Do not let the cultural, moral bankruptcy enter schools around the halls. Have their back.
Hello, I would like, I am a student of North Eugene High School, and I would like to come to the board and express some frustrations that have been happening over at North Eugene High School. A few weeks ago, a group of students, including me, went to our counselor to have them submit some reports against some incidents that had occurred. One of those reports was meant and reassured to us that would be completely anonymous. I found out not hours later that office staff had leaked that, some information about that anonymous report to students. Part of the information that was leaked was partially true but not fully, and led to a much bigger situation than it should have been. The fear of making reports and lack of response from admin many times that we make reports makes it very anxiety-inducing for students to want to go make any kind of report against actions that should not be allowed in our schools. Yet, we find out that even when we want to have that, like, backing and, like, pillow of anonymous reporting, that it's not able to be super anonymous. I went and talked to our admin about this problem about a week ago, right when it happened. And so far, I have not, I have not heard or seen anything done about it. I am not the only one who is, this is not the only situation where this has occurred. I, not hours later, when I was waiting in the office area to speak with the admin, witnessed an office aide, one of the students, ask about an envelope, and that envelope was then given to that student, which I don't think the blame is on the student, since they were just curious. But the office aide basically told, the office staff told the student that they can read it as long as they do not tell who they got from. I think this is appalling to the fact that people are not able to have privacy within, like, submitting reports, and it just makes the whole situation a lot scarier, because it can lead to a lot more dire consequences than a little more drama.
Thank you, Dusty. Our next speaker is Sonia Carlson.
Thank you, I'm Sonia Carlson. I am here tonight as a Kelly parent of a sixth grader, and I'm here to bring your attention to issues concerning equity, safety, and communication. As the school year progressed, I noticed, I started to notice that there weren't many extracurricular activities, field trips, or engaging experiences outside of class time to enrich and excite students. I suggested connecting with established programs that are facilitated through organizations like BRING, but gained no traction. When parents invited about this at parent group meetings, we were told there isn't space or staff to support extra efforts outside of the best program. Best item materials outline an enrollment is capped, and that students are required to attend every day or risk being dropped. After-school care program covers a special critical need, but it is not a substitute for other enriching opportunities. The lack of space is in large part due to the fact that YG and Kelly have been sharing the school, leaving both without adequate facilities. It is public knowledge that the 4J School District submitted a bid for the E-Wed building in January. While generally, that seems like a wonderful opportunity, we can make no mistake that resources are limited. And it is wrong to see this effort put forth when we have two schools branded to one. How does the school district have the resources to offer purchase on their building, but can't find an adequate solution for students of Kelly and YG? Back in October, my son called me at 4:00 PM to let me know that he'd missed the bus. When I arrived 15 minutes later, I was appalled to watch as his school bus was leaving, 40 minutes late. No communication about the late bus was provided to the school staff and subsequently the students and their parents. When I called the office, the first person I talked to told me that teachers leave at 4:00 PM and have no way to contact parents. I was later assured by the principal that this isn't the case, but the experience left me concerned. I understand that staffing issues persist, as they do everywhere. This should not be an excuse to put our children at risk. Jump ahead to Thursday, March 2nd, when parents received a text that Kelly Middle School is currently on secure lockdown. There is no threat inside the building. Neighboring schools on lockdown are taking precaution. Now, this is a frightening experience for students inside the school and for parents who live in fear of another revolving war piece belief, stood outside for 45 minutes while children, let's be honest, children of color were massacred. Kelly is one of the most disadvantaged and diverse schools in the region, and I urge you to do something to focus on them, give them the support they need. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonia. Our next speaker tonight is Michael Litten.
Two minutes, let's get to it. Hello, first of all, Gordon, thank you for making a personal statement about your stance against this curriculum. And in fact, this type of inappropriate material does not belong in our schools. I wish we had a superintendent that would have done the same. My name is Michael. I'm a graduate of Baby Hill Elementary, Kennedy Middle School, Churchill High School, and Western Oregon University. Currently, I'm a Director of Human Resources for a local family-owned business here in Eugene. My family and friends have been employed by this district for over 40 years, and to say I take, or used to take, pride in this district would be an understatement. Today, I'm ashamed, ashamed of what we have become and will be staying for, or will be built to stand up for, as an educational community. In my profession, I sit with employees to discuss their performance and the potential for corrective action and sometimes the termination of their employment. It's called a performance review. Today, I stand here before you and need you to know you have not performed to our expectations. You have not done your job, and you all work for us, so like a bad performance review, you're being put on notice. I remember a time when we celebrated success in this district. Attention was focused on facts, objective material, success, and the future. How in the world did this curriculum and assignment pass the test of achieving that? As a parent, I'm always teaching my kids to feel what's right. Trust your gut and stand up for what you believe, and they do. Did you guys do that when reviewing this curriculum? Did you even review it? Did you do your job? Me saying no. You have lost your moral compass. You're more focused on the dysfunction as a board than the positive educational development of our children. Are you making sure that the district is following the training that you receive through Safe Schools provided by Vector? In this training, they specifically focus on the areas of mandatory reporting, child abuse, and understanding boundaries. So again, I ask you, how does this assignment, or even the curriculum, come close to passing the filters from you all as a district, from the superintendent, or to the school itself? Why did nobody stand up and say, "I don't believe this to be appropriate," and stand up for what they believe? Did anybody ever think for themselves? Did any of you think that this might completely be really irrelevant and inappropriate for an adult to have these conversations with a minor? The only times I've ever heard or seen something like presented to a minor from an adult, Chris Hansen has jumped out of a closet and said, "What were you thinking?" followed by a prompt arrest on national television. But if we do this in school, we call it educational? I'm short on time, so I'll just say this. We deserve better. Our kids deserve better. If you are incapable of providing the security, safety, and discretionary decision-making needed by a school district, you don't need to be fired. You need to quit.
Members of the 4J School Board, my name is Sheena Bean. I have three students in 4J and have always been a promoter of public school systems. Access to a free, fair, quality education is a bedrock of our democracy. Our children have the right to learn in a school that offers a rigorous curriculum, dedicated community involvement, and a staff and teachers who esteem the responsibility they have to shape the next generation. Oregon's public schools are failing. We currently rank 41st in the nation and have one of the lowest graduation rates. Less than 45% of our students are reading at grade level. We should be focusing on academic readiness in our classes and not asking our students to describe their sexual fantasies to our teachers. There is no excuse for this kind of sexually explicit assignment. The 4J School District is placing the blame on the Owl curriculum itself and stated that, quote, "The Owl curriculum is used in districts all over Oregon." If this is so, I would like to know of one other school district in our state who has given their class this assignment. The teacher, Mr. Miller, chose to give this assignment, and if this is a pre-approved part of the Owl curriculum, it should be removed, and I'm glad to hear that it is. If the teacher did indeed choose this, he should be immediately removed from the staff at Churchill until a full third-party investigation can take place. As the parent of a high school student, I cannot see this assignment as anything other than a blatant attempt to promote an immoral sexual agenda to our children. The inherent power differential that exists between an adult teacher or coach and his students has been utterly disregarded. In a culture that professes to value consent above all else, I would like to acknowledge that the children in this class did not consent to be sexual entertainment for their teacher or for a school district with no regard for their safety or propriety. This is ignorance at best and pedophilia at worst. I encourage this board to show their commitment to a safe and inclusive school environment by immediately calling for a full investigation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bean. Our next speaker is Amy Klein.
My name is Amy Klein. I have a freshman at Churchill. I have to change this a little bit because I do appreciate your apology about this, so I'm not going to talk about the second assignment, but I please hope that you do investigate it, as we do have a father in the group, in the class, that says his daughter told him about that class. I won't go there. It's disgusting, and I'm not going to talk about it. I know you yourselves do not direct or decide day-to-day operations, and that there are avenues of which to request or consider reasons of material. But seeing as how you were already in the middle of searching on a new curriculum, I wanted to share my thoughts while you were doing your research. I know you are constantly challenged, especially when it comes to sex ed, but this feels like most people on all sides of the aisles agree upon it, so I needed to speak. I'd like to begin with an exercise. I apologize. Please pull out a piece of paper and write a short story of a sexual fantasy of yours. But women deserve include penetration and any kind of oral sex. Choose three items, romantic music, candles, massage oil, feather Bella, feather Bella, and flavored syrups to use in your story. Please turn that in to me, a stranger in an authority position. Does that make you uncomfortable?
Yes.
Now imagine being a child in a classroom amongst your peers. Imagine you're a child that is actively being abused or has previously been abused and being asked to go through assignments. If this is considered inappropriate for online conversations with minors for evening conversations or even work conversations, who deems this as school appropriate? My friend got her daughter through this program at her church and had to attend a two-hour information session before her child was even allowed to go through the program. They used two trained facilitators in the classroom. Why was this informative session now offered to parents? Whose choice was it to differ from the curriculum and not the two facilitators? Our teachers train specifically on this program. Are teachers trained specifically on this program? Is it standard policy to accept sex ed curriculums from churches? Is there a policy of investigating teachers when there are claims of abusive power? Does this curriculum allow for changes of assignments, and does anyone have to approve that? Please ask yourself these questions as you are deciding on your next curriculum. Let's give this teacher the benefit of the doubt and say he's following protocol. Protocol. I hope you can see the door that this opens to the chance of abuse. Where there have been multiple reports of children being abused on the run every week, including at schools, I hope you can appreciate their concern. I beg you to review your policies, find junior approval processes, involve parents, and have a hundred percent transparency about what is actually happening in these classes and give us the opportunity to choose what is appropriate for our children, the choice to opt out or the choice to read material ahead of time. Because school is supposed to be a safe place and right-hand, responsible body.
Our next speaker is online, Mariko Plusha. Are you with us, Mariko? I do not see her. We'll see if Jonathan Veltcher is online by Zoom. We can move forward with our guest that signed up, our speaker. Would you like us to pick five or, well, we'll do all six?
I think we should just do all six.
Our first speaker is Justin McCall.
Good evening. Many of you know me, so I am here to discuss this atrocity of assignments. I want to first say, you're a liar. It's not a rumor. I have the proof right here on my phone of the whom with you, with whom would you do it with? And my daughter specifically stated that the teacher put up a will on the class board, and it stated anal penetration, oral sex, licking of ear, kissing. And he wanted them to write down the initials of a boy or girl that they would do these activities with. Now, I don't know what's worse, wanting to know my child's sexual fantasy or who they're going to have anal penetration and oral sex with. What is he gaining from this? What do you gain from this information? Why has my daughter that naively did the assignment because she's scared? She wants to get good grades. She wants to be, you know, get her license. She has to get good grades. And so she does this assignment. Where's the assignment? Why hasn't she had it turned back to her with her grade on it? What is he doing with it? Is this for his spank bank? Is he literally using this for his sexual deviant? These are questions that need to be answered. He verbally abused, verbally sexually abused every single child in that classroom. Do you look up the definition? I gave you the paper for the definition of verbal sexual abuse. Now, sexual abuse is sexual abuse. So where's the criminal charges? Why is he still teaching? Is it because he's the football coach and Churchill's doing good? Don't want to lose that hype? Because football doesn't matter when it comes to our children, okay? This sexual deviant needs to be removed. If you do not remove him, I am giving you my word to date that tomorrow morning, I will go down to the county clerk's office and I will file for the removal of every single one of you.
Our next speaker is Mariko, who is on Zoom now, and we need to see.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mariko Plusha. I am a resident of Eugene and the parent of a 4J student. I'm making comment today to ask school board members to use Student Success Act funds toward more support staff and working towards smaller class sizes. This is a matter of equity. More staff and smaller class sizes will affect a number of issues, including the ability to respond to racism, bullying, dire student mental health, accessibility for disabled students, and retention and mental health for teachers and educators. My son is a student at Monroe Middle School, and we really appreciate and like our school, our principal, teachers, and our staff. And we appreciate their swift reaction when racist incidents come up, because they do consistently, or when students are bullied or face dire mental health concerns, including self-harm. But there simply is not enough staff to help address these matters, to help students work through these problems together. This lack of sufficient adult supervision and assistance is detrimental to the students and educators. Post-COVID, more than ever, we need small class, smaller classes, and more help in the schools. More support for students and educators. Please direct Student Success Act funding toward more staff and smaller class sizes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mariko. Our next speaker is Erica Dustin.
Hello, my name is Erica Dustin. I'm part of the Rashid Hurpers. I'm a parent of one parent and two former students in the district. First thing I wanted to say this evening is, thank you so much to our students, all of you, the student rights, for being here, especially my child at Churchill High School. So thank you for your leadership at the high school. You know, I didn't know I was going to speak tonight, so I don't have a planned speech. But what I did want to say is, what a great thing that we have so many parents and community members here that care so much about our students. Even though we may not all agree on things, the fact that we can have a nuanced discourse about a relatively difficult subject means that there's a lot of positive energy here, so I appreciate that. I do, I am not speaking on behalf of any organization or committee or council. I just want to make that clear. This is my own personal opinions. And I am not speaking directly about this incident at Churchill. But what I do want to say is the importance of comprehensive sex education. Comprehensive sex education, we have multiple studies from the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American College of Gynecology, the American Medical Association, that have shown in multi-year longitudinal studies that having comprehensive sex ed decreases pregnancies, decreases STIs, decreases risky sexual activities and behaviors, decreases the risk of sexual partners young people may have. But it's not just that. It helps teach young people about healthy relationships. Having comprehensive sex ed helps decrease domestic violence, intimate partner violence, teaches students about healthy boundaries and relationships. And part of that is trying to acknowledge when there is, you know, any kind of inappropriate behavior from a person of power or an adult. It is so important for the health and safety of our students to have comprehensive sex ed. Not only does it help them have less STIs, it helps decrease homophobia, bullying, better understanding of diversity of students. But it does need to be trauma-informed, especially when children have a history of sexual violence against them. So I think it's important that we have trauma-informed comprehensive sex education. So thank you so much to all the community for everybody being here tonight and speaking. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dustin. Our next speaker is Steve Corin.
Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Steve Corin. I have a sixth grader at Kelly Middle School. And I'm coming here to ask you for urgency of action on two points. One is to please, I thank you for taking the time to meet the staff of Kelly and the students of Kelly. And I'm asking you to please reach out and speak to the parents of Kelly, those that are willing to come here, and those that wouldn't necessarily be comfortable coming here and hearing from their voice, okay? The other urgency is to act, to make sure that Kelly and students in Kelly can have the facilities, such things as libraries, spaces for electives, spaces for band, spaces to walk the halls safely. Numerous kids, my daughter has reported getting hurt. I've heard from staff members saying, "I won't go in the hallways in passing periods. It's too many kids in a hallway." I'm asking for what is equal to the other middle schools. But this isn't any other middle school. And so, and our district has committed to equity. So the base level of facilities aren't there for quality. All of the other middle schools have things that Kelly don't, Kelly doesn't have. And so I'm asking you to please act with urgency on this. On a recent meeting with a staff member, a staff member said, "You wouldn't want this for your children." My daughter's there. I want my daughter at Kelly. She's amazing teachers, she's amazing kids there. Please provide the space that matches and gives the opportunities for these incredibly brilliant kids with great futures to have all the experiences that the rest of the kids in the other schools are having.
Thank you, Mr. Corin. Jonathan Veltcher signed up to speak via Zoom. I just want to make sure that Jonathan's not in the audience in front of him. Our next speaker then is Nicholas.
I'm a property owner in Eugene, and I don't have children. I pay property taxes and I want my money back. We all have sexual deviants. You support it, pedophilia. This woman over here can't even barely read. You're a joke. You're a complete failure. All the parents here, all the parents here.
The rules that I outlined at the beginning.
You're looking at child abuse?
The rules I outlined at the beginning.
And the fact, the fact that you have.
You need to stop. You have, you have.
I asked her if there was any guidelines or anything.
Yes, I stated that I'm beginning off the meeting.
I asked for guidelines and I answered few. Which appropriate?
It is not appropriate to comment on a student, let alone any member of our board.
Well, we should have students who don't have a read in high school.
You need to step out. You're being asked to leave by the board chair.
All right, later. Good luck with all your.
Thank you. I appreciate the audience's support, and I don't think it needs to be said again what our expectations for audience decorum is. We've been applauding and it's gone well, so there's some room, middle room. But commenting negatively on a student board representative is unacceptable. It will never be acceptable.
I think I got the first applause of the evening. Earlier on.
Our next speaker tonight is Emily Ashton.
Hi, my name is Emily Ashton. I'm a student at Churchill High School. I was not planning to speak, but I do want to start with why the issues with Mr. Miller are relevant to me. I already said I'm a student at Churchill High School. I have a class with Mr. Miller. I take his strength and conditioning class. And I am one of the presidents of Feminist Student Union at my school, and I can be a voice for a lot of students that attend. I want to start with prefacing that I'm obviously not in his health class, which clearly makes my opinions about it irrelevant. I went to our vice principal. I talked to her about my concerns. I tried to be a voice for the student body, and she dismissed it because I'm not in her class. So I would like to talk about my experiences in his zero COVID class. I have heard from multiple female students, as well as seen it myself. He stares, he winks, he touches them to fix their form. People, you are all saying that it is the curriculum, but it is clearly the teacher. It's happening in more than just his health class. Students are uncomfortable. They have not been attending class since the issues. I have not been attending. He has not done anything to me, and I have not been attending, and I will not attend his class again. Additionally, as one of the presidents of FSU, we decided to bring this up in Feminist Student Union last Friday. People have mentioned this is a sexual abuse and a sexual harassment issue. It is a feminist issue. And we brought it up, and what happened is that adults in the bathroom swarmed around all of us, and they told us that we had to shut it down. We didn't mention his name. We didn't even mention his name. We brought up something on the news. We talk about things that are wrong on the news constantly. We brought up what was happening in the news. We talked about a relevant issue at our school, and we were told that we had to shut it down. This is ridiculous. People are not attending his class. People are uncomfortable outside of his health class. It is not just the health class. It is the teacher.
Our final speaker tonight is Janet Irs.
Thank you, Board, for giving me the time. I'll be short. Three topics. One, I've talked to Superintendent Di about. We'd like to get Colgate, someone in Monroe and Madison, earlier this month. There was a stolen car parked on the parking lot during weekend hours. And as you well know, I'm kind of the neighborhood watch. And thank you, Officer Skinner, our safety resource person, great lady. She was quick and efficient in getting this situation removed. This parking lot over the weekend brings about a certain criminal element. It comes back up here. The parks and drug activity in the Whittaker is well documented, and it's up to the mic path where a lot of that occurs. Second topic, the contract with Planet Family Inc. in the parking space is being utilized at a rock-bottom price. Although I'd like to see the district get out of the rental of their parking lot to a nonprofit agency that has lots of dollars in space to create their own parking lot. I'd like to see the board require facilities to reissue that contract and phase it out. They have space to have their own spaces there. And I see often, a lot of their folks are not parking in the designated parking spaces. Third topic was regard to the Churchill and the OWL. If we pay tax dollars on that, I'd like a double refund, double return, and shame on that topic. It borders on tourism, if not child pornography. I've never heard of such, such stuff ever. Let's see District 4J shine again. We know it can happen. And let's hope that it does, because that was not a good thing. Thank you.
I come with the first speakers for the evening.
I want to say thank you to the community members who signed up to speak and those who also added their names at the beginning of the meeting. And thank you for being flexible and holding space for more voices to be able to be heard tonight. I know it's hard to adjust your statement from three minutes to two minutes, but I think that adding the extra voices was definitely worth it. So thank you. I appreciate that. I'm going to go ahead and just wait a minute as some of the folks seem to be leaving so we can continue. Okay, we're going to continue with the agenda. Those who are leaving, you can check out to continue your conversations. That would be very helpful. The next item on the agenda is comments by employee groups. No employee groups are signed up to speak tonight, so we'll move on to the next item, which is comments and committee reports by individual board members. Do I have someone who'd like to go first? Judy?
Thank you, Maya. Um, boy, there's so much that we heard tonight. I first want to acknowledge our students. I always learn a lot when you got, when you all share your comments, and definitely want to look into the policy that you brought up, um, about sports guidelines, and we'll do that. Um, and just the, um, growth mindset, and just really hearing what's happening in the schools is very helpful. Um, I also thank the community to come out and really share with them their thoughts and, share with us their thoughts and feelings. It shows a great commitment to our community, to our schools, and to our students. Um, as one board member, I want to do say that the assignment was not appropriate, and I do apologize to the students' parents and community, and the community members that this affected. Um, schools are supposed to be a safe place, and I agree, though, that, um, this does not make me back off from wanting to provide our students, uh, a comprehensive, trauma-informed, and, um, uh, fact-based, uh, sex education. We do owe that also to our students. This assignment, I would say, does not meet that standard, but I don't want us to back off of that larger goal that we do have. So I want to thank everyone who did come. But I also want to use a little bit of my comments tonight to honor, um, a very, uh, dear person in our world, Judy Human. Um, she died on May, uh, March 4th, just this month. And she's widely regarded as the mother of the disability rights movement. Therefore, it seems really fitting to really acknowledge her this month, uh, tonight, because we're in the middle of Developmental Disability Awareness Month, as well as National Women's History Month, both of which she would, we, she should make the books on. She was born in 1947 in Philadelphia and raised in Brooklyn, New York. She got polio at the age of two years old, and her doctors advised her family to institute, to put her in an institution, because she would never be able to walk. Because kids with disabilities were considered a hardship, and economically and socially a burden on families. Um, that was the status quo in 1949. Judy's parents ignored that advice, uh, the advice from professionals and experts, and kept her home to grow up with her family. When she attempted to go to kindergarten, the principal blocked her family from entering school, labeling, labeling her as a fired hazard. However, her parents fought back and demanded that she have access to a classroom. Eventually, she attended a special school and high school, and then went to college at Long Island University and got her master's in Berkeley. Um, and then in 1970, she applied to the New York Board of Education to, for her teaching license. And she was, they refused to give it to her because, um, they feared that she would not be able to evacuate her students in case of fire. Uh, she sued them and went on to become the first teacher in the state of Oregon, uh, in the state of New York to use a wheelchair. Um, continuing her fight for civil rights, she helped lead a protest that shut down traffic in Manhattan against Richard Nixon's veto of the Habilitation Act in 1972. And then in 1973, 1973, it passed. But then, four years later, she led a protest to, and, and others that chained themselves to, um, a federal, uh, a federal building in San Francisco, because four years after this act was passed, in which was Section 504 that we're all familiar with, there were still no regulations, and it wasn't able to be implemented. So people had, people with disabilities had to hit the streets again, and Judy Human was there, one of their leaders. Um, she was really instrumental in starting many, many organizations, um, nationally and internationally for disability rights, getting IDEA passed and ADA as well. As well as the UN Convention, um, on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities. She worked in the Clinton Administration and Obama Administration and advised, as an advisor, and also for the World Bank. Um, I could go really on and on. She's done so many, many things. But, um, I've had the honor of meeting Judy, um, Human a couple times in my life. And she personally has inspired so many people in her lifetime, and a couple people in our own state that have really done amazing things. Susan Segal, who founded Miusa Mobility International USA, and Catherine White, my dear friend, who is a beloved policy and advocacy leader in Oregon. In closing, I just want to share a direct quote from Judy Human herself. "Some people say that I did change the world, but really, I simply refused to accept what I was told about who I could be, and I was willing to make a fuss about it." That really sums her up. So, thank you, Judy, for blazing so many trails for all of us, and making life better for people with disabilities in our, in our country and in our world.
Thanks, Judy. Laura?
Um, thanks, Judy. I, I did not know the woman, but I am very impressed, and I want to learn more. Um, I'd like to start with, um, the testimony we heard about. The, I heard about this assignment on, um, social media. And I was upset, and I messaged the superintendent immediately to ask what this was. Because I think, while I, I don't have the rage that some people express, I, as a mother of five, I was just gassed and upset and mad that a child would have to sit there and look at something like this. Um, and then, again, with no power. What, what do I do next? And the people I trust are, are saying things that are making me very uncomfortable. It's our job to protect, our job as board members is to create better outcomes for students. And we know this is not, an assignment like this isn't creating a better outcome for students. And I, while I do agree about good sex education is important, I ha, I went to 4J schools. I remember sitting through those movies. Um, and I'm, also remember a lot of the stuff I learned in like fifth and sixth grade. None of it looked like that, and I don't find anything necessary to look like that. And so I would like to know more about this curriculum. One thing I do know is most of the people on this board had nothing to do with choosing that curriculum. We didn't vote for it. We don't know much about it, but I think we should know a lot more and be aware that there's curriculum like that that we're using. And, and it doesn't absolve us from responsibility. I absolutely agree. Um, but learning about us with everybody else was harsh. Um, I have some, some things to report that I went to the, um, the Neurodivergent Festival tonight. That's why I was a little late. It was amazing. It was a great turnout. A lot of people were there celebrating just who they are. And that's how it should be. And so, I hope we can do more of these in times when it's not just a few minutes before the school board meeting, which is very stressful. But it was, I think a lot of you would have enjoyed attending this and just connecting with community there, because it was a joyful, joyful event with a lot of wonderful people. We're really passionate about, uh, celebrating what it means to be a neurodiverse person. And I love that, and I took my son, and he wasn't opposed. It could have been the free pizza, but I would like to believe he was, he was happy to be there for other reasons. Um, I have a update. I'm on the ElCog, um, Board. So, um, this past weekend, before the last one, um, we had our annual appreciation dinner for ElCog. That's the Lane, Lane Council of Governments. Um, in the historic Cottage Grove Armory. Um, Judy and, Judy Newman and I and Gordon Lafer were there to, um, be part of it. I, if there were other board members, I, sorry, I missed you. Um... Sorry, I'm reading a lot of things to make sure I get it all. Um, one thing that was really exciting, there was a silent auction, and it was a fundraiser, and they ra, raised over $3,500 for Senior Meals Program, which really helps. Um, if you don't know much about our Senior Meals Program, please look it up. ElCog is doing wonderful things there, and they still need volunteers. So please feel free to volunteer. My dad volunteers and helps make meals, and he loves it. Um, so I want to sh, give a shout out for two people. Um, our Lane County Commissioner Heather Buck was recognized of, as the outstanding elected official this year for her real, her really amazing work on the fire recovery effort. Um, I was part of this fire recovery outfit when I worked with Lane County. I helped create the Human Services side to our wildfire recovery. And having somebody in leadership that passionate about making things work is integral to making things work. And so, it wa, I, I was, it was good to see her get the recognition for that, because it was, she definitely was the real, the real real, as I like to say. Not just there to shake hands and kiss babies, but to really make things happen, and she pushed for it. Um, I'd like to also talk about the outstanding intergovernmental team, which that I was a part of. Um, was, was, that award was presented to the Holiday Farm Fire Collaboration Team. And this team includes state, county, E-Web. Um, this is a, people on the ground up in the wildfire area. It was, and, uh, for them to get the recognition, which doesn't always happen, was much deserved. So I just want to give a shout out for that. Um, so that's, that is my board report. Um, there, nope, there's one more thing. Um, while I was at the, um, at the, um, Neurodivergent Festival, I became aware of something called the Unified Basketball Game Night. So if you don't know about it, it's going to be on Friday, April, April 28th, 2023, at 6:30 PM at the Churchill High School Gymnasium. It is a free event. Um, I will ask to, to get this flyer, I'll get this flyer if you don't have it already, um, at the district, so it can go up on the website. Um, this is what it says. Churchill's High School Unified Basketball Team will host Sheldon High School Unified Basketball Team this year in a Unified Basketball Game Night. The teams consist of athletes, students experiencing intellectual and developmental disabilities, and partners, general education neurotypical students, to create a genuine inclusion opportunity for all learners. This happened last year. Everybody who went, they were telling me about this, and there's no way I'm going to miss this this year, because it sounds like it's a wonderful, wonderful inclusive event. So I just want to make sure everybody knows about that. And, um, also the great work we have for people that are doing this in our own district. Michelle Dunn is our 4J SSD Adaptive PE Specialist, and she is the one who wanted to make sure I knew about this, and we'll get the word out. So thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Laura. Gordon?
Uh, thank you. Um, I want to start by saying a couple of things about the Churchill, um, situation. Mr. Donahue, one of the people who testified, mentioned that no, he had offered an apology to the students at Churchill. And I want to join Judy Newman, for whatever it's worth at this point, as a board member, in apologizing to those students. It's not a situation they ever should have been put in. As Ms. Klein and Ms. Thesen noted, that's particularly true for students who've already experienced trauma, but it's true for all students. I'm a strong supporter of comprehensive sex education and of the Owl Curriculum. It's critical for students' physical and mental health, and for helping them grow up to be decent, full, and unashamed human beings. But requiring students to write down and hand in accounts of sexual fantasies is, I believe, an abuse of power and an invasion of students' privacy. I, I've said elsewhere, I teach at the University of Oregon. I wouldn't assign this to college students, much less to younger students. It's ultimately up to us, the Board and the District, to ensure that our curriculum doesn't include this kind of assignment. I greatly appreciate the superintendent having removed it as soon as he became aware of it. Obviously, now we need to go through the rest of the curriculum, make sure there's not something similar. I know the district is investigating how this happened. I don't know anything about the other allegations that we've heard tonight, uh, both from parents and the student, but I assume and want to make sure that those concerns are also investigated. Um, briefly about, um, Kelly and for the, the parents who testified in Kelly, and the many people who, I believe, feel the same, who did not testify tonight. Um, I agree that the Kelly and YG co-location is, is inequitable. I believe that students from both schools have been operating in conditions for the last three years that would not have been tolerated in South Eugene. I know we're going to be meeting about spending money on a physical building, and Superintendent's going to be leading that, and that's great. When we get to talking about the overall budget in May, I would also like to look at the staffing formula. We normally staff just basically by student enrollment, and that's one of the things that results in there being fewer electives and fewer, you know, just a less rich curriculum at Kelly. And I would like to look at us adjusting and kind of staffing above what the enrollment numbers might warrant, so we can close the equity gap, even if the dollars per student are the same, so we can close the equity gap on what the experience is for students there, especially given what the community has gone through in the last three years. Um, today I was lucky enough to be able to visit the Future Build CTE Program at LCC. Got tour of students doing construction work, which was great. I know they hope to expand into three cohorts next year, which is also great. Um, one of the things I talked about with Tia Holliday from the district is that in another part of my life, I worked with the Oregon Tradeswomen Organization, and I'm interested in involving them, um, in coming in to help encourage and support more female participation in the construction trades program. Briefly, um, later tonight, we're going to be making one of the most important decisions we have, which is how to spend the $18 million that's, that goes under the title of Integrated Guidance Money. This is the single largest piece of discretionary funding that we have. Um, and there, I'll talk about this more later, but briefly, there are three things that I'm going to be proposing that we, um, that I want to make sure we do. One is to create a $200,000 fund that would pay teachers during the summer to develop innovative new courses, units, electives, short intensive courses, or ways of teaching things that are just more engaging courses. I think this should all be focused on lower-income schools. I don't think it all has to be spent in one year, but I think we need to start that. The second is a commitment of at least $50,000 in staffing to begin a program of doing exit interviews with teachers who leave the district, with particular focus on teachers of color, early-career teachers, and those considering early retirement. We've talked about this for years, but we haven't done it yet. This is a national crisis with 40% of teachers quitting the profession within their first five years. Our goal should be using the exit interviews to identify things that we can do within the budget we actually have to keep more good teachers in the district. And I think that has to be carried out in cooperation with EA, with the Teachers Union, in order to make sure the teachers feel free to, to speak honestly. And the last thing, um, that I'll be raising is increasing staffing for educational assistant positions. In the last board meeting, we heard from all three of the employee groups, from the licensed educators, classified educators, and administrators, and all three of them identified as one of the top priorities, the need for increased funding for EA's as a critical part of being able to improve special education and the inclusion model to address racism, anti-queer bigotry, and other forms of bullying and harassment at schools, as mentioned by Ms. Plesha in her comments. Everything in our, in the budget we were presented with is important. There's nothing I look at and think, oh, this is, this is frivolous, this is fat, or this is stupid. And while people often say, "Cut the central administration", honestly, mostly what I see is that people in the central administration also are too thinly stretched and understaffed and overworked, and I look at it and think, God, can't we come up with some more money for these central administrator functions? But nevertheless, we have no choice but to make difficult choices. And to that end, I will ask the superintendent to provide us by May 1st, so that we can, um, address this in the bigger budget discussion in May, scenarios that would answer the question, if we want to add an additional 30 full-time EA positions without cutting school-level staff, where might we take that money from? The answer might be that we decide it's not doable, or it's not worth doing, but I want to have that analysis, so that we can look at that option in May. Thank you.
Michelle? If anyone's interested in learning more about Judy.
If anyone's interested in learning more about Judy Newman, who Judy had mentioned, there's an excellent documentary called Crit Camp. It goes into a lot of detail around disability justice. I learned a whole lot watching that documentary. I would highly recommend it. Some of the student comments, students are people and like anyone else, they have a right to privacy and to consent, whether it's agency and assignments they find objectionable or in reporting concerning incidents. We have a responsibility to respect their confidentiality. Also, thank you, Chaz, for bringing up review of some of our outdated policies. That's up to us to take a look at. I attended the Kelly-YG meeting on the 3rd and it was really a highlight to hear students speak. They care so much. They provided so much detail and insight on what it's like to be at school there day to day. They created a survey, they collected the results, they analyzed those results on their own time. And they shared what they need. I just found it so admirable to hear them talk about how flexible and creative they are in going to school in a building that doesn't really function. And as one student stated, everyone wins or no one wins. I joined the Akesu group at Churchill. They showed everything everywhere all at once in their auditorium. And students from every school attended, every school. And I think that they all played a part in manifesting a lot of firsts for Asian Americans and Asians in recognition of the film industry. It was a lot of fun. I also attended a library advisory at the Chavez Library. Now that there is a teacher librarian in that space, it's looking inviting, organized, and loved. Space is made to be utilized. Martha Dyer, their teacher librarian, has been busy organizing the space, adding to the collection, and building literacy skills among all the other responsibilities that she has in a really lengthy job description. I attended the North Eugene High School play Sleepy Hollow and was delighted to see the students' dedication to theater and the joy in their performance. It was especially fun to see our own Parker Anderson performing. Well done. It was so fun. Early Saturday morning, hundreds of students, parents, coaches, judges, and 4J staff showed up at South Eugene High School for Oregon Battle of the Books, also known as O-Law. The district like remaining a warmed up and already enthusiastic crowd with questions and videos from authors. It was a really lively competition and got a little tense at times, but all four promoting the game. I'm all for that. I also attended the Future Build event. And that was really exciting. The potential of that program, it's immeasurable, immeasurable. Students have opportunities to work with people in the industry, with folks at LCC, as well as their own teachers and students from different schools in the district. And they have opportunities for apprenticeship and pathways into careers. Yeah, there's just so much potential for collaboration in the community and it's really exciting to see. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Alicia.
Thanks, Maya. Being on Zoom, it's hard to see, but it looks like we still have some people in the audience. And I just want to say to the folks in the audience, if my son had brought home that assignment, I would be sitting in the audience with you. I couldn't believe it when I saw it. And I too want to go on record to say, giving an apology to the Churchill students who received that assignment. I have had the opportunity to sit through that two hour of trading on OWL and to look at that curriculum and have never heard of anybody using that and have heard from people that it wasn't supposed to be an assignment and all the things we hear as we're trying to figure out what's going on. And we will continue to look into that, as Dr. Dye said, to make sure this and nothing else like this happens because it is not appropriate and we shouldn't have put our students through that. We heard a lot from parents as well as students that I'm going to, of course, I think, Dr. Dye will get seven phone calls, making sure that he follows up with what we heard this evening. I'm sure every single board member will be checking. Judy, thanks for bringing up Judy Newman. It was amazing that you actually called it out. And Michelle, it is a great movie. It is an absolutely wonderful movie. For me, it's fun because I get to pick out my friends that are in that movie, that were in that sit-in. And for those of you that do trivia, if you get a question, what is the longest sit-in in American history? It is a sit-in at the old federal courthouse by people with disabilities looking at getting the regulations for 504. Probably don't need to know that much. You'd probably just need to know the old federal courthouse. But if you get a chance to watch that movie, it is powerful. You know, there's just so many things that are going on and I really appreciate our direction in our work session earlier with what's going on in the north region, the decisions that we will make later, the decisions that we make decisions, but some thinking and agreements, if you will, that came forward in that work session. And that we continue to make sure we have space for the community and our students and the parents as well to hear their voices as we make the changes that are necessary at Kelly and YG to move forward. Just want to follow up and I don't know if there's a better time to do it, but I know I asked in September and I'm following up again, if we're going to get to have a work session or have a discussion about our contract with EPD because when the board decided to remove officers from each individual high school, we said we wanted to talk about what comes next with the contract. And then we got COVID and we kind of put it on hold. But I think, you know, I'm hoping before my term is up that we'll be able to start, at least start that conversation because I think it's really important that we have it. So as we're looking for, we don't have that many more meetings. Like I'm hoping since I did bring it up in September and I've touched on it a few times, that we can figure out where in our agenda that could fit. So thank you. It's my report.
Thanks, Alicia. We'll conclude with my statement. I want to begin by saying that I stand by the statement that Superintendent Dye made at the start of the meeting regarding the human sexuality assignment from Churchill High School. I only want to add that I fully support trauma-informed comprehensive sex ed, as community member Erica Thetson described. And I also recognize that this assignment was not only inappropriate, but holds tremendous potential to have been harmful. For this reason, it is my expectation that as part of the communication from the school, it is made clear that all students from this class or any student who requests care and support or proactively offered the chance to access counselors and mental health specialists. I am also so sorry 4J students experience this anywhere, let alone in school. Students deserve to feel safe at school, full stop. Last week I attended a town hall hosted by the Equity Department. This town hall was intended to provide a space for our Black students, staff, and their families to discuss the use of the N-word in schools and to offer guidance on how 4J can improve our racial harassment policy and school-based practices. When this policy was written and adopted last year, it was done so with the intention that it be a living document and should be frequently revisited to ensure it serves our students and staff as optimally as possible. The conversation was only just started and will continue. Attendees shared the tremendous pain, harm, and trauma they are experiencing. They also offered suggestions on how to improve the format of the town hall structure. In addition to continuing this conversation as a community, Dr. Lake has been meeting with students in all four high schools, offering the chance to share their experiences and perspectives. We learned at our Equity Committee meeting later in the week that town halls for other identity groups are in the process of being scheduled. This town hall was well attended, but it was noted by quite a few participants that there were people missing who really should be part of the conversation. I am thankful to the other board members who were able to show up and to listen. And as we heard at the town hall, the community was thankful as well. People want to feel heard and they want to see action. It's up to us to do both. The Equity Committee also spent the bulk of our time together hearing from Melissa Barber and Shasta Quidley, behavior specialists, on the equity-based discipline matrix the district is currently developing. I look forward to learning more as it continues to be developed. We just held a work session this evening discussing the Kelly-YG situation as well as the future of the north side. But one thing worth repeating, in our Kelly-YG meeting two Fridays ago, we established a shared value in our decision-making, one suggested by Tim Everett, Kelly middle school teacher, and readily accepted by the entire group. This shared value is that any decision we make will ensure both schools are made whole again. I also want to add that we have in fact committed to bringing in community voice. We haven't forgotten. Last weekend, I had the pleasure, like Michelle, of attending North Eugene High School's fabulous closing night production of Legend of Sleepy Hollow. Not only was the show a delightful mix of scary and funny, but our own student board representative, Parker, as Michelle mentioned, was a member of the cast and performed beautifully. However, my favorite part of this production is that it was student-directed. So I ask you all to join me in applauding the student director as we are lucky enough to have him here with us tonight. Please give it up for Dusty Stratton. I also had the pleasure, like Michelle, of attending the Oregon Battle of the Books Regional semifinals featuring schools from all over Lane County. I am pleased to report back that four teams representing four 4J schools battled their way into the top four positions and will be headed to state finals. I want to give a big congratulations to Buena Vista's Fabulous Five, Edgewood's Readers in Time, Big Steps from Eugene Gaucklin and Canvas Ridge's Besties for the Resties. That's the name of the teams. It wasn't obvious. Thank you for representing 4J and I wish you all the best of luck next month in Salem. Last week was our formal Classified Staff Appreciation Week. And it was delightful to see students, parents, administrators, and licensed staff stepping up to celebrate classified staff all week long. I had the delightful opportunity to help with a taco bar at my daughter's school. But here's the thing, there is no reason why appreciation must be bound by an artificial timeframe. These designated weeks make for a flurry of concentrated intentional appreciation, which shapes up to be an absolutely fun week. I would never suggest taking it away. And I also know that appreciation is welcome and needed year-round. So I wanted to take a moment to share a little bit about what I learned about classified staff and encourage folks to extend their gracious acts and words of appreciation through the end of the school year and beyond. I learned that we have well over 1,000 classified employees, 1,000. I learned that we have new employees onboarding every Tuesday and employees cannot begin until after they have onboarded, but many begin the very next day. This means that our newest additions to our team of classified staff started today. So welcome to the 4J family. We are so pleased to have you join us in all the different ways in which we work to care for and serve 4J students. I also learned that on the other end of the spectrum, our employee with the greatest seniority is retiring this year after being with the district for 38 years. He is closely followed by another member who has been with 4J for 37. And perhaps what was most enlightening was the huge range of positions that follow through the classified umbrella. We often hear about and see the folks in positions that are most visible to the community through the day-to-day interactions we experience, serving vital roles. For example, but not limited to, bus drivers and aides, campus monitors, custodial staff, school secretaries, educational assistants, we call them EA's, food service staff, attendance clerks, registrars. But what really blew my mind is that there are 110 different positions that are categorically classified positions. I'm not going to list them all for you today. I'll spare you because there's 110. But I am going to list a few and I will list more another time because their work is just as vital to ensuring our district operates smoothly. And we should all know about them because until we do, we can only extend generalized appreciation. We have AV textbook specialists, a classified benefits coordinator, communications specialists, computer technicians, data entry clerks, driver trainers, the bus drivers have to learn how to do that, district translation specialists, mechanics, heating technicians, irrigation specialists, plumbing specialists, post-graduation planning specialists, roofers, a safe routes to school coordinator, safety specialists, and on and on and on and on. It is no coincidence that I began my series, The Heart of 4J, sharing my appreciation for different staff members of classified staff. I have heard many metaphors and views, many myself, describing the essential and grand importance of our classified staff, but really they are in the heart. They pump blood through the organization's veins, keeping our district operational and in good health. And they are the folks coming every day and doing work that is driven by a sense of love. Our staff chooses to work in a school district. Our staff chooses to devote their professional time and energy to making 4J as welcoming and safe a place as possible. And where there is a need for improvement, they are here to support transformation. They are here for our students by caring for them directly, caring for the building they go to school in, caring for them as they go to and from home, caring for the resources that enable instruction and direct care to take place, and caring for the systems that keep an organization of thousands and thousands running smoothly. So thank you, classified staff, for hearing the call to do heart work and for being an essential part of the heart of 4J. At our next meeting, I will be featuring the two classified staff members with the greatest seniority, one who is in a position of direct care, the visible kind that we talked about earlier, and the other in that second list of folks many of us do not even know are included in our large extended family. I look forward to sharing with you about them, but first I look forward to learning more. So moving along in our agenda, the next item is the Consent Group, Items for Action. There are four items on the Consent Agenda tonight. Is there a motion? Gordon?
Based on early reconnaissance by board members, I would move that we adopt the Consent Agenda with the exception of the February 1st minutes and items three and four.
Is there a second? Judy? Judy, okay, so Gordon moves to adopt the Consent Agenda, Consent Agendas with the exception of the February 1st minutes and items three and four. Is there a discussion? Okay, all those in favor of adopting the Consent Agenda with the exception of the February 1st minutes and items three and four? Oh, Judy, did you take your mic?
I do have a clarifying question. Because we removed them, they go to items for action then, is that right, those three items?
I think you'll just make the motion after we finish this and that can be the case.
Okay.
All those in favor of adopting the Consent Agenda with the exception of the February 1st minutes and items three and four, raise your hand and say aye. I see hands raised by five, six out of the seven of us. All those opposed, raise your hand and say aye. Laurel, are you, can you use your electronic hand to raise, to vote for one of these?
She's having trouble sound.
And she, can you? And she, can you, can you use your electronic hand instead of sound, Laurel?
I think she may not be able to hear.
Rob, will you text her? I know we're not supposed to abstain, so I just want to make sure we did this properly. Okay. Can you hear me, Laurel? Can you tell her I'm going to call the vote again? And I'll do thumbs up for the positive and thumbs down for the negative. All right? All those in, okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes, oh, sorry, the consent agenda with the exception of the February 1st minutes and items three and four, raise your hand and say aye. Oh, I just, Laurel, I'm just doing something. Is that, is that a raised hand, Laurel? Okay, awesome. All those opposed, say aye. Well, it passes unanimously with, yeah, ayes from Maya Rabasa, Gordon Laver, Laurel O'Rourke, Alicia Hayes, Michelle Shu, Judy Newman, and Kirthee Hasidjeh Hoffman. Could we maybe get a phone speaker? We'll pause for one moment and figure this out.
Log back in, maybe.
That's what she's doing.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can, Laurel. Welcome back.
I can hear you.
Okay. Superintendent Dai stepped out very quickly. He'll be back in a moment. Judy?
Then I'm going to move that we add the items from the consent agenda, the two contracts, three and four, to the items for action. And, yeah.
Is there a second? Oh, Alicia, second. Um, is there any discussion?
I, I think we can still work on them. I just have a simple question.
Okay. I think we'll just hold on for one more second to continue. Michelle has a question, but I think Andy needs to be here to answer it. I'll be right back. So Andy, just to fill you in on where we are, we have moved to add items three and four from the consent agenda as items for action. And it was seconded and now we're in discussion, and Michelle has a question.
I'd like to know if those items are time-sensitive.
If we discuss this evening, I think we'll be fine. I'd be able to answer questions that folks have, and such that you could say aye.
Right away.
Yeah.
And, and the need to.
I'm looking at Matt and calling us out of the room. I, I believe that we have some time. The unfortunate part is that the next meeting, we have until April 19th. And so, in a perfect world, I'd be able to satisfactorily answer questions that folks have so that they feel comfortable moving on.
Are there any other questions or comments? Any other questions or comments? Laurel?
I don't have a question or comment about this one. While I was having hearing problems, I wanted to bring up the March 1st consent item, and I couldn't, I wasn't hearing right. So is it, I would like to make sure that it's accurate for our, minutes are accurate and they're not accurate right now.
Okay. Let's finish the motion that's on the table and then we can come back to that.
Okay.
So if there's no other questions, then all those in favor of moving items three and four to action items, raise your hand and say aye. Passes unanimously with votes from Maya Rabasa, Gordon Laver, Michelle Shu, Judy Newman, Alicia Hayes, and Laurel O'Rourke. Laurel, Gordon, did you pull the February 1st because you thought that's a Laurel amendment?
Yeah, Laurel, I thought you said February 1st, not March 1st. Is that correct?
Um, I'm, I, yes, I may have misspoke. I meant March 1st. Do I need to make a motion?
Okay, then I I guess I I guess it's a new motion then. I, I move that we consent to the February 1st minutes and poll for discussion of the March 1st minutes.
Is there a second? Gordon has moved to approve the February 1st minutes and poll the March 1st minutes. Judy's seconding, yeah. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the February 1st minutes and polling the March 1st minutes, raise your hand and say aye. Passes unanimously with votes from Maya Rabasa, Kirthee Hasidjeh Hoffman, Gordon Laver, Michelle Shu, Judy Newman, Laurel O'Rourke, and Alicia Hayes. Laurel, do you have your hand raised to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to have the minutes changed for March 1st to accurately reflect what happened right before the recess.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, it sounds like the motion dies there. Alicia, your question?
Thanks, I'm just, I'm sorry, I missed something. I thought we polled, did we poll those minutes and we're going to talk about them? Can you, or did, and so we're going to talk about them during items for action? Or are we talking about them now? I'm sorry, I don't understand what's going on.
I think Laurel is asking, not as item for action, she's asking for us to revise the minutes. We've done this a few times. So I think she's just asking for us to vote to revise the minutes.
Didn't we talk about this at the last meeting? Just asking for clarification.
That was from a different date. This is from the last meeting.
Okay, and they aren't polled to be discussed later? They're being discussed now, as well as Judy's motion, Judy's the one she polled. I'm just trying to track. I'm sorry, Maya, if I'm bugging you.
In all honesty, we asked to put the items for action directly following the consent agenda. So whether we do it now or announce that we are officially in items for action, it'll be right now.
Okay, thanks. I just wasn't tracking. Thank you.
Gordon?
I'd just like to move that we, if we do these as items for action, we do them actually at the end of the items for action. Listen, Kirthee Hasidjeh Hoffman asked us to move the action.
Are we still doing something or is my thing over?
No, Gordon, Gordon was talking.
But we're in the middle of a motion, aren't we?
And, and he's, I mean, actually, Laurel, your motion didn't get a second, so it died. But I think Gordon is making another motion, so we can hear what he has to say.
So, so A, I would like to move that the two items that Judy Newman raised go on as items for action after the other ones because Kirthee is ill and asks us to move those things up so that she can make sure to, to be on for them. And those are, those are the bigger, kind of more vague and time-sensitive ones. So I make that motion and then I this is not really a motion, my comment, or my, I'm happy to talk about the March 1st thing, but I don't know what the, it felt like. I couldn't vote to say, yes, we'll change the minutes because I didn't know how we were being asked to change the minutes. So I'm happy to have that conversation at some point later tonight or another meeting. I would try to have the conversation. So, so for right now, my, my motion is just to have Judy's two things be as items for action but follow the other items for action. And then if there's a way for Laurel, for you to restate or figure out a way that makes sense to deal with March 1st things, that'd be great.
Is there, is there a second for moving the items three and four to the end of the list of items for action? Kirthee, I assume that's you raising your hand a second. Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of moving the items number three and four from the consent agenda to the end of the list of action items, raise your hand and say aye. We have unanimously approval of the motion with votes from Maya Rabasa, Judy Newman, Kirthee Hasidjeh Hoffman, Michelle Shu, Laurel O'Rourke, Alicia Hayes, and Judy Newman. Judy, you have your hand raised?
Yeah. So the item that Laurel raised, I think the reason we didn't get a second, we were trying to figure out what was being asked. So I guess I'd either, I definitely support having correct minutes. So I'd like to figure out how to do it. Either Laurel, you have some edits to propose tonight, or maybe we bring them back at our next meeting with your corrections that we can add to the minutes and vote on them. Either one would, I don't know what your preference is. Um, well, as as far as I understand, I just say what the, what I want the changes to be and we vote if that is, if people want that to, to be, and they would be more of an accurate reflection than what is in there right now.
So do you want to make the motion again, Laurel? Oh, sorry, Alicia has her hand raised. Alicia, and then Laurel. Oh, Alicia doesn't have her hand raised. Laurel, would you like to make another motion and make it, give it another shot?
I would like to make a motion to edit the March 1st minutes to accurately reflect what happened.
Uh, is there a second? Okay, seconded by Alicia. Moved by Laurel to edit the March 1st minutes to accurately reflect the meeting and seconded by Alicia. Is there any discussion?
Can I speak to the motion?
It's Laurel's motion, so she should go first, but then Alicia, you can go right after.
The only change I would like to make is that there was a, Gordon made a point of order. There was a vote on that point of order. From what my view, there were, it didn't pass. And then we went to meeting, to a recess. So I would like it to show that there was a vote because it doesn't show the vote. It is in the Zoom, so it can easily be looked at and then accurately reflect that there was a board vote.
Okay, I'm going to put myself in the queue behind Alicia. Go ahead, Alicia.
Actually, I wasn't going to talk about it. I was just going to talk about the way the motion was proposed, which is, I think when we look at minutes, we should say, you know, that we want to look at minutes because I have a correction to that because that's what Laurel has, is a correction. And so that's all I would say is that's what I, I want to have that time. And if now is the time, that's great. But otherwise, it wasn't about, anyway. It's just, that's what we should stick with as a board to make a correction to the minutes. Does that make sense to you? And not, not the other parts. Thanks.
Okay. Would you like, Laurel, to restate your motion? Now, okay, this will be.
I don't need to. I just want you to know that's what I'm looking at, is a time to have the discussion.
Okay. So I had myself to the queue. Laurel, the recollection that I have, and I also went back and looked, is that the vote itself was interrupted by the recess. It was called for those in favor, but there was no opportunity to call for those opposed. And it was several board members up here who called for, who asked me to call for the recess. So I just want to put that out there, that the vote was not complete. So I'm not sure that the minutes are actually inaccurate.
The
Do you want to, Laurel?
The minutes do not reflect that there was a vote at all. There was a vote. You could say it was incomplete, that's fine, but it should reflect that there was a vote.
Go ahead, Gordon.
I just wonder if there's somebody on staff who maybe could look at, just so we don't have to do this now. I want the minutes to reflect whatever actually happened. And I honestly don't exactly remember. If the tape shows what you said, Laurel, it's totally fine with me. I just wonder if there's somebody who can do this and then bring it back to us at the next meeting. Is that doable, Debbie? So I guess that would be my proposal, would we ask Debbie to do that and then bring it, bring back the proposal to us at the next meeting rather than talking about our memories tonight?
Gordon, will you make that an amended motion?
Okay, I, we'd like to make an amendment to the motion that we ask Board Secretary Debbie McKim to look at the recording of the last meeting in light of Laurel's proposed corrections and come back to our April 19th meeting with a suggestion for how to make sure that the minutes accurately reflect what happened, including whether there was a vote or whatever.
Laurel, do you accept Gordon's amendment?
The only change I would make is that we can only direct Andy Dai. We cannot direct staff. And so that's the only change I would make.
Accepted as a friendly amendment.
Are there any other comments or questions? All those in favor of directing Andy Dai to have one of his staff members look over the recording and possibly revise the minutes to reflect what the recording shows? Raise your hand and say aye. The motion passes unanimously with votes from Maya Rabasa, Kirthee Hasidjeh Hoffman, Gordon Laver, Michelle Shu, Laurel O'Rourke, Alicia Hayes, and Judy Newman. If that, we move on to items for action and we start with the first item on the list, which is to approve the academic calendar for 2023 to 2024. Pass it off. Pass it off to you, Andy, if you have anything to add. Although we've had a chance to look at this. So we might as well start with a motion. If somebody would like to put one on the table, then we can have a discussion. Is there a motion? Alicia?
I move we approve the academic calendar for next year as written and stated in our board books.
Is there, is there a second? Seconded by Judy. So moved by Alicia to approve the academic calendar for 2023 to 2024 as it is presented in our board book and seconded by Judy Newman. Is there any discussion? Gordon Laver?
I pondered if this was included in our, I missed it. I just wanted to touch on the thing we talked about before about having the two grading days be eight-hour days as opposed to four-hour days per term. My understanding is that there was a a third compromise proposal. that would have the first one be internalized six hours and then one and a half hours of joint planning time. And that if educators decided that would be useful, that would be, got to continue in term two. And if not, it would be eight hours. Is that, do I have that right? That that's where we're at?
Yeah, Sabrina and I spoke and we feel collaboration time is important. We could do it in the first midterm grading day and then take a look at how that worked and make whatever adjustments need to be made based on experience. If that included, um, something completed, there, then we'd be open to that. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? In that case, all those in favor of approving the academic calendar for the 2023, 2024 school year with the note of the compromise reached between Sabrina Die and EEA President Sabrina Gordon. Raise your hand and say aye. That passes unanimously with yes votes from Meyer Rasa, Kyrthe Asija Hoffman, Michelle Shu, Judy Newman, Alicia Hayes, Gordon Laver, and Laurel O'Rourke. Okay, we have a five-minute break requested. Alicia, I'm looking at you for a second, do we follow a recess officially? Yes?
You can do whatever you want. I'm not taking, no, that sounds good. I, I like the idea.
Okay.
Yes.
If there are any objections to taking a five-minute recess, please speak up. I can't see everyone, so please speak up verbally if you have an objection to a five-minute break. Okay, we are officially in recess for five minutes. Okay, I see we took an extra minute. I apologize for that. We'll wait for Alicia and Laurel to rejoin us. If you want to show your face or put something up on the emoji and Kyrthe, Kyrthe still here? Kyrthe, if you just give me a thumbs up if you're ready to jump back in. Or any of your favorite reactions. Give Kyrthe a minute or two more.
Hi there.
Thank you, Kyrthe. Welcome back. The meeting is now officially back in session. The next item for action is, uh, board member support. Wait, no, I'm sorry. I have my numbers mixed up on here. The next item for action is. Yeah, the integrated guidance. Yeah, sorry. The integrated guidance. To approve the integrated guidance activity plan. This is also something we have seen several times. So we'll begin with motion and then we want to discuss the necessary. Alicia?
I push all the right buttons. Um, I moved that we approved the integrated, uh, plan as written by, and I'll ask Dr. Die later, who have the final say on this, but as, uh, proposed by staff.
Is there a second, Laurel? Okay, so moved by Alicia to approve the integrated guidance plan and seconded by Laurel. Is there discussion? Gordon?
I, I would like to, um, I'd like to move it, or maybe first get comment from the superintendent on the two specific proposals I mentioned earlier, which is having a $200,000 fund to pay for teachers to develop innovative new courses, units, intensives, whatever, with the understanding that that would be focused on low-income schools and doesn't have to be spent all of the year. And then that we commit $50,000 in staffing to begin doing a program of exit interviews. So I don't know if the, so I guess, I guess first is a question for the, um, superintendent about how that compares to current plans. And then I may or may not want to make a motion to set this as a funding budget.
Thank you. We have, um, for several years in high schools, we've actually put aside money for intensive course development. Historically, that was for summer intensive programs. And currently in the budget, there's an amount that I, I know exceeds the amount that you've proposed and likely is to exceed the amount that teachers would have expressed a desire for based on participation last year. But it's really hard to predict what teachers would be interested in to do from year to year, given the times that we're in. I would propose that we stick with the $350,000 that is currently set aside and has been for intensive course development and then gauge interest and then return to that topic in the event that there are so many teachers that are interested in this that we need to add to the agenda, or not the agenda, but to the budget. And that's a possibility.
And just as a follow-up, could, is that, is that money right now, um, set aside just for summer intensives? Or could it be used for either, you know, if we say, okay, we want, we want to enable people to teach, uh, you know, intensive courses on eight Wednesdays? If we, you know, if we go with, uh, the schedule of flexible Wednesdays in the high schools or, uh, other, or even somebody in elementary school wants to create an innovative unit that's, is that money available to be used for things? Or is it defined in a way that it can only be for summer intensives?
Right now, it is set aside for intensive course development. We have talked in the conversation about a transition to a new schedule, if that would be a possibility. I think we would want to sit back down with the EEA and talk about what that might look like developing MOU so that everybody understands what they're getting into and the terms are clear. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, thanks. And, and on the exit interviews part?
Yeah, the exit interviews, actually, um, prior to this, working with Chief Administrative Officer Colina Beer, we're taking a look at staffing and human resources. There is an intent to fill positions that are currently available that haven't been filled due to a lack of applicants. We believe that we need to have someone with primary responsibilities for upbeat survey. And that would be the same person that we would have do the exit surveys. So it's not a dedication of dollars from the integrated guidance program. It's more general fund, um, support to, to hire new folks for HR that would be undertaking that, that responsibility.
So if I understand right, if that, that would be more appropriate for discussion today about the general fund budget as opposed to this, uh, integrated guidance money?
I believe so. I think that that's an investment, but hoping to, um, have SIA in particular be investments for direct services to students as much as possible. We have other funding to do these. Thank you, of course.
Thank you. Um, before I move on to the next person, just have noted that I would be putting myself in the queue after Laurel. So next is Judy.
Great, thanks. Um, I just want to briefly comment on the exit interview because that's something I know I've talked to superintendent about before. I'm in favor, I think we could explore, um, getting some, a third party, a neutral party like at the U of O with a, for a project. I think we've tried some, at least my understanding is the district has done some things with exits. It's really hard to get people to follow up, but there would be maybe some value as a partnership. I know there are always projects looking, you know, that go a term or more with, with qualified graduate students. So it's something to explore that might, might try something that might be more successful. So we just add that to the conversation to look at. My question for you superintendent is, um, this looked good. I got to look at the line items. I didn't really crosswalk it. We saw this two weeks ago. And I know we were a bit over, over the budget that we have to allocate, which is what, almost 18 million? And, um, so my question is, what was the process and what did we, what, and how did you decide what to leave out?
There were a series of conversations with different departments that had things that they wanted to add into SIA. There were some decisions that were made to place requests, uh, in other revenue streams. ASR, for example, we could have put things into the general fund. Not everything that was proposed actually ended up m- making the cut because we could think of different ways to meet those ends or that potentially this next year was not the right time to make that significant investment in say professional development for district leadership or, um, professional development for a particular department. Because we weren't quite sure whether or not we would have the time to do that.
Laurel, did you put your hand down or do you still want to speak?
Um, yeah, sorry, I, I, I must have. Um, I just wanted to say that I am excited about the amount of work that's gone into this and the things, you know, that are close to my heart that this is covering, like CTE and, and, um, uh, a big thing I would like to see, and this would probably be, um, some is here, but, uh, it will probably be more in the general fund is, is, is what we're hearing from staff is for support staff and the necessary amount of support staff and, and how we can help make that happen. I think it's just such a, a, a big part of also retaining good educators. So I, but I really appreciate the work in this and that it covers some really important things that I haven't seen covered so thoroughly since I've been here. So thank you.
I'm gonna jump in, Alicia. I, I put myself, okay, I just want to make sure because I don't have the hand raising capability. I, um, just wanted to ask about the possibility of, um, under the Natives program, we have designated almost half a million dollars, so 490,000 for one admin and two maps. I'm wanting to see us invest some money and I don't know if it would come from this or from our dental fund in bringing up the natives tutors from 1350 an hour to 18 dollars an hour so that they would have the same pay that the best tutors are receiving and, and, um, I don't think it takes much arguing to know and understand that this is helpful in promoting the success of our students who are part of the natives program. So I just want to give you the opportunity to discuss where that might best come from, if it's a possibility.
Sure, thanks. Uh, the district strategy in paying for the FTE associated with those leaving the program was so that the funding that they get from the Title VI grant from the federal government can go to direct services to students. And so, um, historically, much of that grant was tied up in staffing salaries and benefits and how they have considerable dollars to do that with. I can work with them and with HR to see, um, how many people that we hire that are not, um, represented by the collective bargaining unit in the agreement that we have with OSCEA, just so that we wouldn't do that for one group and inadvertently not do that for the other. But I don't know that there's, um, any of the tutors that disagree that would be a good thing to do. And I don't think the program administrative staff have a problem with that either.
Okay, so, um, short version of the long answer is that it is very likely that we will be able to increase the pay from 1350 to 18 dollars for these tutors?
It sure would say entirely possible.
Okay, thank you. That's even better. Um, I appreciate that. So then my, I have no other questions about the integrated guidance. I thought we'll pass it off to Alicia.
Thanks, Maya. Um, so I know a lot of work went into this and I know we had presentation two weeks ago. And then I think some changes were made. So who made the final changes? Who, how did that come about? Because we had to do some work on that. So that's my question.
Sure. Um, I don't know that there was any one person that made the final changes. Some of the decisions were, were made by me, um, run through the changes that were made with folks that had requests in for their area of responsibility. Getting down to the wire, we, we, I think it's pretty safe to say that Rob Heskey, the staff, and I took all of the budgets that, um, the budget proposals that had been submitted and asked questions of different departments and see what could be done. In some cases, the decision was, as I referenced to Judy, not doing some things so that we could, for example, put in target more staffing for targeted class size reduction or more staffing support for, support for inclusion. So I don't know that I can answer that I did alone or that Brogan Sid, the Assistant Superintendent, did alone or that Larry Misael from the Diversity Equity Inclusion Department did alone. But I would say, it's safe to say that I, I was the lead administrator in the process of, of getting to the budget and calling some items and replacing some of those. We also gave, I don't want to, I won't be able to list everybody, but I don't want to leave out the fact that we, we processed this with decision leaders, we processed this with, um, with some parent groups. We, we processed this through a bunch of roadshows with staff, I'm asking them to give us feedback. And some of that feedback went into making some of the changes that we made, getting to see reflected here. So tried in as much as we possibly could to get as much information as we could prior to this, um, final meeting.
Yeah, and we also, um, in order to, to finalize, we worked with the, the people that were doing the budget analysis in terms of the reporting to the state. So we got their feedback and they, they really emphasized that when it comes to the reporting, if we can narrow the scope of the outcomes, and so we reduced, in some of those early versions, there was multiple outcomes of more than 12. And we reduced it to, to four outcomes through four, uh, four for each category. So that was another, uh, key, key feature in simplifying and focusing the grant. We also analyzed in terms of new work, sustaining work, and then scaling work. And that was feedback that we got from people that we worked with along with descriptors for each one. So what, you could actually tell what the project was.
Thank you to the essence of your question, Alicia.
Um, Laurel, I'm gonna go ahead and let Gordon go. Okay, Laurel?
Am I going or Gordon?
You.
Okay, um. Andy, I have a question about, um, I'm hearing, um, from different areas that, um, we're not really hitting the PE minutes that we're supposed to be hitting. And I'm also, in my knowledge of mental health and movement and how important is to, for kids to get out and move. Is there room in this, and maybe I missed it in the numerous pages, for more, um, just, I'm not talking about, um, sports per se. I'm talking about PE, and I know I don't know all the nomenclature for this exactly. I think, let me know if you need me to be, to clarify even more because I won't say it right. I'm sure of it. But do, is there room in this for more PE? Because I, I, I hear that, I've been hearing that kids are not getting a chance to move enough.
I would say, uh, it is a long circuitous story. There is a set of standards in Division 22 that requires a certain number of PE minutes be hit at elementary and a different number in middle and then a different number at high. Many, many districts in the state, at least 50% of the districts, um, mostly the larger districts like ours, ask for waivers. They do as best they can, but given the size of the school and the fact that there's only one gymnasium or open space for them to do PE in a given day, ask for waivers because we don't hit that minimum. We, um, are in the legislative session right now where the minimum requirements are a topic of discussion and the expectations for schools, um, is considered likely to be changing to some degree. That has nothing to do with the budgetary question that you asked and I want to acknowledge that. I also think that what we do needs to be a part of the general fund allocation and not SIA so that these funds can make particular investments and we need to, um, do whatever staffing or the allocation need be done. So with our. staffing and the allocation need be done so that with our general fund dollars, so that that's set in stone and not dependent upon a grant or additional dollars beyond general fund.
Okay, thank you. And there'll be space and I can, I can ask this at a later time, but to really connect what it means for movement and mental health and how I, I think a lot of times we silo things and I know this happens everywhere and every organization. I just I think we're in an all time need right now and I just wanted to highlight that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Gordon? And so I just wanted to raise the thing that I mentioned before and that I think, I think fits with Laurel's earlier comments about educational assistant staffing. I don't really need to make the motion, but I just wanted to without having to make a motion, can I ask the superintendent if we can get by May 1st, it will be timely for our, the budget committee and our deliberations on the general budget. Scenarios that show if we wanted to create additional 30 full-time EA positions without cutting school level staff, where might that come from? And in whatever way the district staff thinks it makes sense to look at that, like you said, well, here's what it would take to do five positions, two of what it would take to do 10 positions. So just so we can think intelligently about what those trade-offs might be and, and if any version of a trade-off is worthwhile. Is that, I guess if you, if the superintendent, if you think that's doable, then I don't need to make a motion. If we can have that by May 1st or if it's controversial, I'll make a motion and we can discuss it.
Not to be overly pedantic, but just to point out for this alone, integrated guidance, which includes some smaller comprehensive school improvement or targeted school improvement dollars, more substantial high school success dollars and even more substantial SIA dollars. This plan represents, and not all of these are new, but some are, 75.3 FTE and 255 hours of classified time. Some of which is new. If the board as a whole tells me that what you want is a plan, what it would take to get, come up with 30 additional classified positions, and of course, that's what we would do.
I appreciate the non-pedantic response of that. And, and you know, I think from my point of view, when we have the numbers, then it would also be useful to have the kind of information that you just said, like, look, here's what we're already doing. So I just want to be in a position where we can kind of intelligently weigh the none of which is going to be, like, there's nothing that anybody thinks, oh, this should be cut. But, so I guess my question to, maybe to the chair of fellow members is, if this is controversial, we can talk about it. If not, can we agree to ask this of the superintendent?
I guess my question before I answer yours is our policy is that if it takes more than 15 minutes, we have to approve it as a board. Do you anticipate this will take longer than 15 minutes?
A good answer would, yes.
Okay, in that case, Gordon, I would prefer that you make the motion.
Okay, I move that we ask the superintendent to provide the board by, by May 1st with various budget scenarios showing where money might be taken if we wanted to fund additional 30 full-time EA positions without cutting school level staff.
Can I ask you a question? Because we have a motion on the floor. Should we finish that first? I just, I'm wondering. Thanks.
It's fine. Judy?
Oh, no, I think I'm going to withdraw my comment and speak to the, the second motion. We should deal with, we're talking about the whole plan right now, right? Yeah. I don't have a comment for that right now.
Laurel?
I'd like to call the question.
Regarding Alicia's motion.
Yeah, I'd like to call the question for the motion that's on the floor.
Okay, we're just clarifying. I want to make sure that everybody had a chance to speak. I understand we're calling the question, but to do so before everyone has a chance to speak.
We have to have a vote.
I understand. All those in favor of calling the question? It passes unanimously. All those in favor of approving the integrated guidance plan as presented in the board book? Raise your hand and say aye. Aye. It passes unanimously with yes votes from Maya Rabasa, Laurel LaRorque, Gordon Laper, Michelle Shu, Alicia Hayes, Judy Newman, and Kirithia Sujah-Cockwin. The next item on the agenda is, oh, sorry, Gordon, you had a motion you wanted to make?
Yeah, so again, I'd like to make the motion that we, that the board asked the superintendent to provide us by May 1st with scenarios of if we wanted to add 30 full-time EA positions without cutting school staff, how that amount or, or any smaller amounts, what kind of cuts would have to be made to make that possible?
Is there a second? I see Kirithia is seconding it. So moved by Gordon to direct the superintendent to explore how we might add 30 EA positions, classified positions or EA?
It's a BA.
EA positions and what scenarios that might lead to. And seconded by Kirithia, I see Judy, you have your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. I, I have trouble voting for such a very targeted request right now because there's lots of things we've been talking out about. People want more mental health providers, they want more librarians, we want to lower class size. And so if we keep making these requests one at a time, we aren't going to really step back and we don't have endless resources. So I'd like to make a more coordinated plan to look at the things that we prioritize as important all at once so that we can make some educated decisions. So I, I can't support just doing this one specific request right now out of context. I think it's a great idea, but is it greater than lowering class side with, you know, where do we find the balance? And I'm also worried because I know those are the positions we haven't filled. Can we realistically fill more, 30 more positions? So those are my concerns about just putting it out there that way.
Alicia?
Thanks. Just want to piggyback on what Judy said. Because, you know, we can ask the staff to do that. We aren't voting to do it, but it also, I don't know if we should be holding a conversation where we look at a whole bunch of things that we can then ask the staff to look at, not just throwing out, you know, this, this attempt at this or that. The other thing is I'm curious if we have HR in the room, how many unfilled positions do we have now? Because I understand that's almost a bigger issue than the openings. It's, I mean, then creating more jobs, it's not being able to fill the jobs we have already. And so I'm just wondering if Dr. Di or you've got someone that can answer that question for me because if we're, if we've got 20, 30 positions open any given week, is this really the best use of staff time? Thanks.
Here's something.
Sure. I don't have a precise average, but the range of unfilled classified positions on any given day is between 25 and 35 days.
Laurel?
So my, I guess my question around this is, I do think being so specific could be problematic because I do think there are many support staff that support educators in different ways and have different titles in our schools. So I, I would maybe ask Gordon to modify it to be something of more general to about support staff. So we're not just, maybe we don't get the whole answer with such a pointed question to the, the superintendent. And my, my request, I guess, the way, when I look at this is I, I get the point of what Judy's making, like, there's a lot lot of things that are on the table, but I really do think this is maybe one of the most more, most important ones. I do, I also know, I have had friends I know, friends of friends, kids of friends, adult kids of friends who have applied and either have, who absolutely have credentials, have never heard back from the district. Or they get, they hear back weeks later and they've already applied and gotten, you know, they're in steps for another job. So there's something going on in our system that is not working that really needs to be looked at. Because we can't, I, I don't think it's just the fact that we can't hire people, like, they don't want to work here. I think it's also the fact that we can't, where our systems are not moving in ways that actually are how humans work. Like if I don't hear back from a job I apply for in several weeks, either I know I'm applying for a federal job and that's normal, or they don't want me. And I, there's other jobs out there, especially in this market right now. So I would like to look at, you know, systems, but I also would like to know all the people that go into supporting our educators. And I guess that would come from our staff that get to say that. I really want their voice to be part of this, our educators telling us. Because in our, I don't know the name of it, but you know, the classrooms that have higher needs, I think there's people with different names in there that have been saying that, that, you know, they can't keep staff and they're, they're having problems, but they're not just called EA. Some of them have more, more specific titles. Is that correct?
Sometimes referred to as paraprofessionals.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're covering everybody that is doing this work. So we, we, yeah, and we, so we get the full idea. I think it would be great to have for the budget committee as well, not just for us, but for the entire budget committee to look at this and when we're looking at the other things that we're asking for. Thank you.
To clarify, they're referred to as paraprofessionals, but those folks are actually EA's, right? Or behavior specialists sometimes?
Yeah.
Kirithia and then Gordon?
Um, yeah, so I signed it today because we needed to have this discussion. And I mean, I think we are all on the same page, which is that I think Gordon's well aware of my propensity to like not want to treat things symptomatically and want to look at what the larger thing is. And I think that's where Laurel and Judy and Alicia are getting to, which is that there are issues in supports, there are issues largely across the system right now. And that I just want to say we do also have a budget committee coming up immediately on Monday where these things are going to have to be discussed to and put in that thing too. So I do think that there is the system approach that Laurel's talking about and then looking at what chokeholds and obstacles are there, but then also just looking at broadly, like, what our key priorities are. And if like EA's are one way to support, if there's other ways to support, what are those? And if there's where specifically the supports are, because EA's are so, also not equivalent across the board. So if we're looking at them in sped classrooms, or if we're looking at them in gen classrooms, like, that's a conversation. So it's, it can't, I don't think that's, I think it's more nuanced than this. And I would propose that we are looking at this in a more holistic pattern, but understanding that we are looking at additional staffing as a means to address some of our our obstacles.
I'd like to put myself in the queue, but go ahead, Gordon. I, okay, I'll, I just, I, I understand what Kirithia just said. You put it in a way that really makes it clear to me. And at the same time, I'm just looking at our calendar and seeing that we have a budget to approve coming up. We don't have another board meeting until the 19th of April, which if we were then to ask for this for the beginning of May, would leave staff a week and a half to pull it together. Which I don't think it'll take a week and a half of time, but it would have to fit within that week and a half. So I would be inclined to want to get a generalized. I know there's a range of pay differential for some of these support positions, but I don't think it's so broad that we couldn't get a clear picture of what it would look like to create 30 positions that would contribute to the success ultimately of our inclusion plan. And that's not at the exclusion of also thinking deeply about systems and asking for some system investigations to take place as well. I don't see this as mutually exclusive personally. Gordon and then Judy?
Uh, thank you. And so, right, just to be clear, we're not talking about making a decision about what to do, just without getting information. I'm, I'm happy to say EA's and paraprofessionals or whatever the superintendent thinks is the right way to capture that the, the full group of employees we're talking about. I also would love to have, you know, a dashboard which let us, you know, compare everything versus everything. What if we want more our teachers? Or if we want more nurses, where can we take from here? But the fact is, we don't have that now. You know, we have a I don't know, a gazillion line budget that we all theoretically could put into Excel and try to do something with, but we don't have that tool. And I think it's, I'm assuming it's a lot to ask, it's a lot of, you know, work to ask the staff to say, not just do the math, but think about if you wanted to do this in a way that would be the least damaging to, to central operations, where would it come from? And maybe the answer is there's nothing, everything is essential. But I think that's the, the exercise. And the reason why and why I'd love to do it for everything, the reason why I'm focused on EA's is primarily because we asked for input from educators, from all our, all the employee groups and all three of them. But it allows me unanimously to point to this and partly as a way of not exactly lowering class size, but lowering the ratio of adults to students in some of the rooms to making special education and inclusion work better, to being able to do better at combating bullying and bigotry. I also know that at least in some places, EA's have been, schools have been notified of EA hours being cut with the possibility of more cuts next year. Maybe that turns out to be necessary. I don't know, but that's why I think it makes sense to focus on this and at least to get the information so that we and the budget committee can look at it and say, does it look like there's any trade-off here that we think is worthwhile? Or should we leave things exactly as they are in the budget now? And if somebody wants to add something on April 1, Keith, I'm not against learning more and getting more information, but it's based on the input from our educators that I think this is the right, the most important top priority thing to start with. Thank you.
Before we go into number round, I just want to make sure, Michelle, do you have anything you want to contribute?
Not so much contribute. I, I am concerned about the ability to fill the positions and to be setting that sum of money aside and to not be able to fill. That is a concern. And there, there is a need. So I'm not sure how to balance those two things. Yeah, I don't know where the money can come from. It would be interesting to, to see how that could be balanced.
Judy?
Um, I think that, I mean, I, my takeaway from hearing from our employee groups was that we wanted to have more hands in the classroom. I didn't necessarily get saying people that it should be EA. And I think, I'm, I, I guess I would feel more comfortable asking our staff to say, you know, the intent, our intent is to reduce class size, get more people in the classrooms, that would really be helpful to address the problems that we're facing. And then get some suggestions of different ways to approach it that are realistic, that we can really do. Again, I have been doing all the last two years' training for EA's around the state, at least in early intervention, and it is really rough to hire and sustain those jobs. They're very hard because we also need to have a lot of time to do professional development. So I'm speaking, I, I think if we can grow that workforce, there's a whole lot to doing that for sure. And I didn't hear, like, I heard my, I don't And I didn't hear, like I heard my, I don't, I think we all have different ideas. Some people were saying, are these going to be targeted at our inclusion programs? Or across the board to keep our kindergarten and first grade smaller? So I just, I would like to get more of a proposal about how to accomplish the goals that we heard from our employee groups and we're hearing from teachers to, um, get relief in the classroom. And so, uh, rather than just going down one path.
Just to clarify, the inclusion model that we have wouldn't mean that it would impact across the board?
Yeah, I, I don't think we've rolled it. We only have pilots going on now, right? It's, I mean, the plan is eventually to do it, but it's not in every school.
It is, yeah, in every school to a certain degree is, but the truth of the matter is that it's, it's most definitely a work in progress. That, that's, that's probably the most accurate way to describe what we're working on right now with inclusion.
Yeah, I guess then we would need to report because the last I heard it was not necessarily everywhere. I mean, we have learning centers and we have that kind, we have services in every building, but not that the inclusion program, the full inclusion program we're trying to build. But we could learn about it.
Alicia and then I'll let myself to the queue and then I believe everyone.
I just want to say that I was in line as well.
Yeah, I see. The day after you, um, and then if I go, everyone will have spoken twice besides Michelle.
Kirti had her hand up before me, unless Zoom says otherwise and it's lying. I'll go.
First Zoom is definitely lying, but that's okay.
And I just want to take over our lives. Um, I just had two things, um, meant to say, which is, I think, um, that in talk, like just listening to all you guys, I think we're all roughly saying the same thing and just getting to that point, which is that we are all looking at increased staffing at certain levels to meet the needs of these classrooms, whether they're inclusion or not. However, we did hear from the employee groups that they're also, what Judy said, is looking for the support. Cause the classroom EA's are only as good as their capacity to deliver well, legally, professionally, with the right supports in place. That requires training, that requires a sustainable program of professional development. So just adding 30 EA's isn't just 30 EA's, it's 30 EA's plus staff hours for training. So if hours for PD, it's for developing what those plans look like and to keep a support system in place. So if that's our goal, and if that's coming across from, hey, this is where we want to get to, we have to understand that that's not just staffing hours in an EA level. So I'm saying is that my proposal is here to laugh, have this conversation. If this is our idea, we want to get the staffing program in place. Um, understand that for this coming year, that we're going to even have to look at what the training requirements would be for 10 staff, 20 staff, where that stuff would even be coming from. Um, and then Maya going to your timeframe on here, which is that we're meeting not again as a board until May or whatever that is, and it gives a short time. We have a budget meeting on Monday. We can literally have this conversation on Monday and then propose that next action on what are those three things that we're looking for. But I think that we need to like, look at this in a way that's not like, hey, entirely systemic. But if we're looking at staffing, understanding that staffing isn't just staffing, the, the, making it sustainable requires time and effort from other people who are not just at that salary level. So it may be that the money is coming from less staffing and more support for staff, or maybe coming from additional programs. But if that's our goal is to increase that in classroom support, what does that look like? Um, and then figure out where that money's coming from. Thanks. Please, Lauren, my hand now.
My turn. Before you Maya, are you going? Okay. Okay. So, um, I think what's hard on this one is, uh, that it's, it's that target. And everything you've talked about, like Maya, you pointed out the short timeline, Kirti pointed out the budget committee. And we want to give staff enough time to figure this out. So I don't know if it's a friendly amendment or a head nod or what. But if we, what we're asking is to give the staff an assignment and it's, and it's just too narrow for me. Um, I would like to, uh, I think we can meet everybody's needs by giving out, uh, the staff, asking them to come back with a proposal for that dollar amount and where you would take it so that we can have that robust conversation. Cause I started thinking about PTs and OTs and nurses and, you know, maybe we want one more here. If we lose, you know, I, I fear I've heard legislative, uh, talk about, uh, OTs, um, and a minimum. And, you know, all these things that are happening. But I do appreciate the short timeline for the staff to do that work. But if we give it to them with a little more open ended, I absolutely would support that. I just can't support the narrow focus because we haven't had the conversation. And I would like to be the first to go on record to say, that's the second time I've talked. And we did vote that you only get to talk twice. Uh, so I feel like I got to get it all in. So I think, uh, if you're keeping track Judy, are you, uh, or if you're keeping not Judy, I'm looking at Judy because she talked twice. But if you keep a track Maya, you've only got one or two people that, oh, I think you've got two people that haven't talked twice. Thanks.
Yeah, that's why I mentioned that I have my second time and then Michelle. Can you wait one second? I, um, I appreciate exactly what you said, Alicia. And for me, in order to have that conversation, I need to know what that dollar amount is before I can even consider this as a possibility. Which is why I am curious, uh, using this as a, as a starting point to get an idea of, of what kind of dollar amount we're talking about before I can start imagining if I'd rather use it for this or use it for OT. I, I, I gotta know what number we're even beginning with. So, um, my last question, I suppose to Andy, and I know this is maybe a question for Matt Brown is 15 minutes is not enough for a good answer, but what, what are we even spending all this time talking about in terms of requirements of staff to just simply get information? We're not even at a point where we're talking about implementing this. We just want to have an idea of the dollar amount and where that dollar amount could possibly come from.
The dollar amount depends on what request it's associated with. Uh, I think we can use average, um, employee salary and just multiply it by the number. But that would be different if we're talking about 30 EA's versus two occupational therapists, two speech language, speech mythologists, some EA's and, you know, whatever the menu is.
I think that Gordon's request is maybe for average of the folks who serve in the capacity of EA. So we're, we're closely to that, the behavior specialist support folks. Um, I think are, are in a similar role in the school. Um, and then we all know the magical formula for licensed folks. So with that big number and the idea of where it could come from, then we could start imagining other possibilities.
With some back of the envelope math, 30 EA's would be roughly, roughly $1.7 million.
Okay. Michelle, do you have anything else that you want to add? See, that was maybe 15 minutes.
Well, the answer wasn't, calculation might, uh, might be.
Okay. So, uh, Gordon, that's the person who proposed this and hearing you say that you want a modified motion.
Yeah, I'd like to amend the motion that I think captures what, uh, what Michelle and other people just said, which is the dollar amount may be less than 15 minutes. The question of what would have to be cut in central administration if we're not cutting school staff is how much is obviously going to be longer. So my proposal would be that we get that for the dollar amount that's equivalent to, to 30 EA's. But then we also get, you mentioned Maya, which is, and here's what, what it costs per OT or per teacher or per nurse or per other things. So that the budget committee and the board can look at that and say, is any version of this, things that we might do with money in, in, uh, school based staff worth making this kind of cut to central administrative staff? I think that we can do that with our F.com, capture what other people are saying that's more broad.
So I don't even remember who seconded your motion to begin with. Kirti, um, Kirti, do you accept that amendment to his motion? I don't know if Kirti's. Without Kirti being there, I.
Sorry if you guys were calling me. I had to leave and grab some, that's.
It's okay, Kirti. No worries. Gordon just amended his motion and asked the person who seconded. I wanted to check with you to see if you still seconded that.
Has the motion been changed, Annie?
No, just recently. Oh, yeah. Um, it was that we, um, asked the staff to, to, to tell us what kind of cuts to central administration would be needed to come up with a dollar amount equivalent to 30 full-time EA positions. And also provides the information on, um, the cost of OTs, teachers, nurses, whatever else. So that the board and the, and the budget committee would be able to say, to look at trade offs more broadly between anything we might cut in central administration, anything we might fund in school-based staff.
Sorry Gordon, I still think it's a little narrow. So sorry, I may not second this one this time.
Okay.
All right. So then we, um, vote. All those in favor of directing the superintendent to have his staff, give us a dollar figure for 30 EA generalized positions. And give us an idea of where in the budget we would have to make cuts in order to find those funds. Raise your hand and say aye. All those opposed, raise your hand and say nay. The motion fails with ayes for Maya Rivas and Gordon Laver and nays for Kirti Hasidja Kaufman, Laurel LaRocque, Michelle Shu, Judy Newman and Alicia Hayes. Laurel, are you speaking to this or can we move on to the next agenda?
I just wanted to make a motion that is just more broad. I, I obviously want more help than this, but I was hoping for an emotion that would give more leeway to the superintendent to come back with this information for us. So, um, if, if you have another way of presenting this Gordon, that gives just a more broad base for the staff to work with, then I, I absolutely can support that.
Yeah, I've, I've tried, but I'm wide open to somebody else's suggestion. I don't, I don't have another version right now. Thank you. I appreciate the sentiment.
Um, Judy, did you have one? Cause you were speaking to it more eloquently than I have in my repertoire right now.
Um, I have a, a thought. I don't have a motion yet, but if see if this, if this is on track, I could make it a motion. So, um, I, I think our budget is not going to be bigger this year. So I think our question is if we want to, wanted to move resources to, um, into the classroom to reduce class size and provide the sports, supports needed as identified by staff. How could we approach that within the budget we have and just make an open ended question to this, to the staff? Cause it would require taking money from one place to another, because I don't think we're going to have a bigger budget. So really the question would be, how would, how, how would you, what, what would be, how would we, could we approach that if we wanted to? Andy, you're looking that, does that, would that give you direction?
I would ask for you to just restate so that I was clear. I follow you.
That, um, with the assumption that our budget's going to be similar to this year. So we have, um, uh, how would we, how could we rearrange what's in that budget to put more resources in the classroom? To either reduce class size and give the, that, to reduce class size or give the supports to the classrooms that are being requested? What would be the recommendation of what those supports are and where those funds would come from?
Thank you. My following is clear.
So Judy, are you making the motion?
Sure. Um, I move that we ask staff, um, to, and to me, it could go to the budget committee to, to, okay. I move that we ask staff to present some options of, assuming we have a flat budget. I ask staff to look at some options that, that enable us to put more resources into classrooms to support our classroom staff.
A second.
Okay. So the motion is to direct our superintendent to have his staff look into, um, various ways in which we might provide additional support for our classroom staff.
Yes.
Moved by Judy and seconded by Laurel. Judy said yes.
She said either reduce class size or.
Well, I said to support classes. So it could be such as reduce class size or put other supports in that would.
That's not part of the motion, what you're saying.
But you were saying I had that in there, Gordon. It leads on.
Um, it is now open to discussion. Gordon?
I basically support this. Cause I think it's basically the exact same question I was asking. The exact same thing is, could we take resources from central and put them into increased school, school staffing? Whether that's reducing class size or adding support. The only thing that I would like to, to add, if you would accept as a friendly amendment, is to put some thresholds in there. Cause I think just to say increased staffing in general is like, I don't know, five people, 10 people. And for the budget committee ourselves to be able to make decisions, uh, what I would like to see is some cuts. Here's what it would take to do five people, get to 10 people, here's 25, something like that. Um, so that the budget committee might decide this much is worth a trade off and beyond this, it's not worth a trade off. So I just want to have some more specific thresholds in there. If that's okay with you. Other than that, I would support what you said a hundred percent.
Would you state that differently? Cause I, I'm assuming that's what staff would come back with us. I can't tell them what the thresholds would be. And I don't want to specifically direct them to central staff. I'm just saying, where would the money come from? They could suggest it comes from somewhere else too. I'm, it could come from central staffing. It could come from elsewhere.
Um, I'm going to put myself in the queue behind Alicia and then, uh, make sure everyone has a first chance before we go to the second.
You're, you were first Maya, go.
Okay, um, gosh, I'm going to have to go after you. I want to make sure I can remember my question, but just let it in my head. Do I have Alicia? It's getting late.
Actually, before Judy made her proposal, I was just going to say, my guess is Dr. Die is going to leave this meeting and create something because he knows the question's coming. So I don't know that we need to vote on this. I believe he is a smart enough guy to realize he should have this, some answers. He's not looking at me like, no, I'm, I'm taking the rest of the week off. No, uh, that he, uh, that he's going to get some answers for us because, uh, this is going to come up in the budget committee. I don't like how narrow we're going, even with Judy's, because this is also seven other people on the budget committee. Um, and, um, and I, I would however, alert you that you should have some thinking on down on this. So that was my two cents. Thanks.
Uh, I remembered my question. I was going to ask if we could, since this is a question, a motion now that leads to further discussion. Gordon had originally asked for it for the beginning of May. I'm wondering if we could ask for it for our next board meeting so that we can use it for a conversation. But that's up to you Judy to accept that amendment.
To put a date, I, I guess I was assuming it was going to the budget committee as well. To put a date, I, I guess I was assuming it was going to the budget committee as well. So do you want it to come to the board first?
I just didn't think it would be ready by May. That's asking, especially the way that it's now been broadened, I think that's asking for a lot more work from Gordon, less important.
Yes, I envision Monday being a realistic expectation for quality.
So that's why I was hoping that we would hear from it, about it on our, at our next board meeting, Judy, instead of waiting till May.
So I guess I'd ask staff if that's realistic, I, yeah.
We can certainly try. I mean, the circumstances, the circumstances will dictate what we have available to us. We will give.
Yeah, go ahead.
Laurel, and then I want to make sure that Michelle and Kirti have a chance before we go into another round of comments.
Um, I, I guess I, I would say, I, I thought it was coming to the next board meeting. That's what I, the assumption I had of, is there a possibility for it to come to a Friday memo as well, since it's information that we can take in? And maybe ahead of time, in case we have any questions about it, before we get to the board meeting. I, I, obviously, this is something that we're all interested in, we're all talking about it. It's important. Figuring this out is paramount. So I definitely, I like the way, um, Judy has stated it, and I would like, um, yeah, I, I support that, that it's, it's true, we don't want it so broad that we can't get any really information out of it. But we do, I think it is stated in such a way that, um, it can tell us things that we need to know. And I think naturally, of course, we'll need to know tiers, because we may not be able to afford thirty, or, or maybe we can afford more. So that's wishful thinking. So please, I'd like to vote on this, because I think we, we've spent a lot of time on it, but I do think we can, um, I think it's really important that we do this, because our children are, are suffering. Our work here is to lead to better outcomes. And one thing, and you know, it's, it's in news stories around the country, that, um, we have cohorts that, from COVID, that are suffering and that are having a really hard time. And then that leads to the kids that are in high school that are also suffering. And so we have, it's coming across the bar, and I really would like to see that we have more support in place and figure out, and really focus on how to do that. Thank you.
Michelle or Kirti, I, I have one last thing to say myself, um, and I want to give you a chance first.
Um, Superintendent Die, I think you're probably clear on what we're asking for, um, where there are possibilities of moving resources from other areas to supporting classrooms. Yeah, thank you.
The only thing I wanted to add is that I also recognize that part of what we're asking you to do is very similar to what the district just did with the Integrated Dieting Plan, which is all based in funding additional supports for our students through direct services. So I don't know, this feels like the ask from something small to something really big. I'm not sure, um, I want to have the conversation, but I'm not sure that we're asking it in a way that is not an enormous task for our staff.
So this, if I may, this is the time of the year where we're making decisions about how to allocate resources. I think it's different that there would be, uh, how do you reallocate resources to get X number of a specific classification of employee? But, um, that's exactly what folks are doing right now, is trying to determine how do we build a budget? How do we reallocate resources at a time when student enrollment is declining and our budget is, um, likely to be flat? It might not be, um, uplifting answer, but we'll get a series of scenarios to tell you where we're at.
Is that doable by April nineteenth?
We'll give it our best shot. We have an indication that we won't be able to do that. We would give you a more comprehensive answer on May first, but we'll provide some scenarios on the IT.
Um, I'd like to, uh, see if there's any other questions, but recognize that we have a board member who is needing to leave the meeting and one more item for action. Gordon?
I guess I just, I'm fine with knowing more than what I proposed. I think that we are talking about putting more staff in classrooms, which means taking staff or money from the central, from central administration, or decided we can't do that. So I don't, you know, when Judy said, oh, it's not necessarily that, that's fine. We can know more than that, but I just want to make sure that what we get back includes the ability to know that. If we wanted to increase staffing in the schools and take that from, from central, what might that look like? And because EAs were specifically asked for by all three employee groups, I want to be able to answer that. So just like Laurel said, is it five, is it ten, is it twenty, or is it nothing? You know, we don't know. I'm happy to know that about other things, too, but I just want to make sure that the ability to, we don't answer this in a way that we end up coming back and not having the ability to answer those questions. Thanks.
I don't see any other hands raised, so, oh, Judy?
So, uh, back to Alicia, do we even have to vote on this? I think the superintendent told us exactly what we, he's going to do. And he's listened to us, I guess we can, but.
I think we have to vote if it's something that we're asking him to do that takes longer than fifteen minutes. And I think long discussion and now voting will literally take thirty seconds. All those in favor of directing the superintendent to bring us ideas about how to better support our classrooms, where that funding would have to be pulled from, ideally for the April nineteenth meeting, if possible. Make sure, hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes unanimously with votes from Maya Abasa, Gordon Laker, Michelle Shu, Kirti Hasija Kaufman, Laurel LaRocque, Alicia Hayes, and Judy Newman. Next on the agenda is action item, board member support. This skipped the steps, uh, that we typically have. So instead of just making a motion, I see that Superintendent Die is listed as a presenter.
Thank you. Yeah, it was on the last board meeting and we decided to amend the agenda and move this forward. There is a request for, um, support for Laurel LaRocque. And, um, we'd like direction from the board on how we would want, how we need to proceed.
Laurel?
Yes, so as far as I understand, the district has discretion for support for boards, so that it has training, it has, it sends people to, um, conferences. It has discretion to do that. There, I, apparently, there are people on this board that specifically have found that the support I, the district has offered, because of the racism I'm dealing with, has bothered them. And so they've asked for this to be brought to the board. I find this troubling. And I just wanted to speak to that, because this is not normal process. This is inside of the superintendent's discretionary spending and not normal process. So I would like to point out, this is me being treated differently than other board members.
Um, Laurel, I believe that it was the other way around. I think the superintendent's office didn't feel comfortable making the decision and brought it to the board. I don't, I don't know that it was in the direction that you're suggesting.
I, I, I'm sorry, you're replying to me, uh, correcting me again, which is not how this meeting works. Um, so the reality is, they wouldn't have done that if people hadn't pushed back at them and asked them to do that.
Okay, so just to clarify, we're doing the same thing that you're pointing out as a problem. Would you like to make a motion so we can have a proper discussion?
My motion, okay, my motion would be that we allow the, the district and the superintendent to use the policy that is already in place for what they do to support board members and not to micromanage this.
Is there a second? It doesn't look like that's receiving a second. That means that the motion dies at this point.
Could I ask the superintendent, what is the policy that's already in place to support board, to, when board members? I believe there's a policy in place already.
Well, I'm happy to extend grace, but I ask that you do the same thing in return. If we're going to be veering away from the standard of our meeting, that we need to not attack other board members when they also do so.
I just asked the superintendent for a, a question. Are, I don't understand what you're saying. Are you saying, because I asked the question, I'm attacking you?
I'm saying that you were suggesting.
You're accusing me attacking you? I would like you to be careful of your language.
To extend the same grace that I'm extending to you by veering away.
Do not send me grace.
That is exactly what I said. And that's exactly what I said. And that's exactly what our board agreed to do, is to extend grace. Andy, do you want to answer about the policy?
Yeah, the policy is BHD, and there's some ambiguity in the policy about what is the prerogative of the superintendent? What is the prerogative of the board? And I don't have the policy directly in front of me, but I believe it relates to, um, expenses being reimbursed for travel, training, and conferences with approval from the board. And I'm just harkening back to the times I've been in this position from July one. And in some instances, board members, I believe, out of past practice and habit, went to OSBA conferences, for example. And I don't recall there being a, a vote amongst the board, it was just done. And then in other situations, we look at, um, expenses that might not have historically been supported by the district, and there's a requirement for board approval. And so I'd like some clarification on how we apply policy PBHD, so that staff can make decisions, knowing that we're operating within the quarters of policy.
Alicia? You're muted, you're muted, Alicia.
Oh, man, I almost went a hundred percent without making that mistake. Um, so I'm bummed, because I had that policy up, because we didn't receive it in board books that I, I saw. I took a picture and everything, and I lost it. So it's a short policy, so if somebody has it, maybe, uh, for board, uh, you could read it. So that's aside. I think we have two questions on the table. If we are, as a board, going to accept this request, uh, for coaching, I impact coaching, then I would go ahead and make that motion, so we can move that forward. And then talk about whether we need to update the policy, which I just want to say, I think we do. Um, not only do, I don't think we at all followed this policy this year, um, in any of the trainings. And Andy referred to OSBA, um, which we traditionally talk about as a board, but I know there were trainings that I had no idea board members were going to. Or that, you know, I could ask to go to one, because in sixteen years, that's never been the case. Um, and so that's, uh, so we didn't follow the policy this year. Um, and, and I think we need to, I think this board needs to update that policy. So by two, or one, can you, I have three requests. Tell me if I'm going too many, um, read the policies, so we're all working off the same one, if people don't have it up, or put it up somewhere. Two, uh, this is, um, kind of two split, which is an intent right now to, um, okay, the ninety days of impact. And, um, and then three is to revisit the policy, and I would suggest we do all of those. Thanks.
Okay, I can do the first one easily. The policy, BHD, board member compensation and expense reimbursement. No board member will receive any compensation for services other than reimbursement for approved expenses actually incurred in the performance of board functions. Such, such expenses may include the cost of attendance at meetings, conferences, or visitation, when, or visitations when such attendance has been approved by the board. The district will establish accounting procedures consistent with this policy. I can read it again if anybody wants. So based on what the policy says now, does somebody want to make another motion? Alicia, do you want to speak?
Yes, um, I would move that we go ahead for ninety days to continue the option for coaching. And then I would like to come back and make another motion after we do that one.
Is there a second? Judy? So Alicia would like to renew the contract for another ninety days, um, and Judy seconds it. Is there discussion? Alicia?
Um, it seems to me that, um, this is an interesting policy to put over this request, but it may be the only policy we have. And I think the policy, one, hasn't been followed, and two is in it, is, uh, needs to be updated. And so that, therefore, I would, um, I would extend the ninety days as we work on that policy. And then, um, deal with some of the issues that have come up, uh, with us as a board over the last year around travel and other expenses. So that's why I'm putting it forward, so that there's, um, there's a glide path on this one. Thanks.
Judy?
I just had a question, because, um, I guess I'm assuming it's been approved once, be, I think, and, and so this, in which we didn't, as a board, know or approve. And now we're approving an extension of something that we weren't involved in approving in the, in the first place. So that's a little hard. I don't know how you, is this a contract? Is this just a service? And what's coming before us now, because it's asking to be extended and didn't come the first, uh, first time, because we thought it fit under the policy? Is that?
I think, I think you're not asking it of me, so I'm going to pass it to either Ron or Andy to answer.
Yeah, there are, um, there are a number of things that we've done over the course of the year that we've paid for. Some with board support and some in, in alignment with practices that we have had. For example, in requests for support as part of complaint procedure, um, or travel. And we engaged the coach in the initial contract. And then in a review of board policy, seeing that there's some ambiguity there, to some degree, we have discretion. And then there's this policy that says that board members receive compensation for services when approved by the board. And so I, I think, as Alicia noted, the clarification and the revision of the policy will provide the clarity that staff need in order to do what the board intends to be done. Right now, we don't know that we have proper direction. Which, which means that some actions could have been taken every year in the year that are violation of the policy, and that's not a good place to be.
I think to put myself in the queue, I think Gordon had his hand raised. Gordon?
I'm just, uh, I don't, I don't mean to, I don't mean to note details of coaching, but I don't, I have some questions about the, um, the contract we're being asked to approve, which is whether this is still with somebody who was an attorney for a board member? Because I'm concerned about. because I'm concerned about potential conflict of interest of the board paying for somebody who's someone's attorney, and what the rate, if there's an hourly rate attached to this, what that is, if that's not confidential to know. So I'm just trying to figure out what, what we're voting on exactly. Thank you.
Is there an answer regarding the hourly rate or the conflict of interest with this person being a board member's former attorney?
The contract is stated is a 90-day contract for a flat rate, so it's not broken down by hourly rate. The contract states that during the linkage contract, this person could not serve as the contractee's attorney. Is that correct, Rob? Yes, correct.
So I have two questions, or I have a question and then a concern. And I, my question is, would this be an extension of the contract as it's outlined in our board packet? In which case, that would mean $5,000 for 12 sessions, which comes out to a little over $400 a session? And I just want to make sure that that's what we're still talking about, a continuation of that same contract? I'm looking at you, Rob or Andy?
It's $5,000 for 12 weeks. And I don't know that it's one session per week or particularly linked to each session.
Okay, I believe the contract said one session per week. My second, my, my second point, which is a concern, is that I, I think that we should be having this question after we've had the question of the policy. I appreciate, Alicia, that you want to have both. I just think we're doing it in the wrong order. Just because we've violated the policy doesn't, and, and violated it without knowing doesn't mean that it feels right to violate it, having the knowledge that we would be violating it. So I would prefer to return to this, and I would propose tabling it until we've had a question, a conversation about the policy and revised the policy. Because as the policy stands, this doesn't meet the policy. And I think this is, it makes me uncomfortable to, to use district budgeted money for something that's not covered in policy. Laurel, before we go into the second round, I just wanted to see if Michelle has any questions, and I believe we've lost Kirthee, so it would just be Michelle. Laurel and then Alicia?
Um, so, yes, it's an opinion. I do, I do not think it is out of policy at all. It's being brought to the board because it's been asked by board members and leadership to bring it to the board. And so, it is here. It is not outside of policy at all, in any way. And I, I think that's an opinion, and of course, everybody can have opinions. It's not accurate. So, um, the fact is, is this is a toxic environment, and having a coach has been very helpful for me to continue my work. And I, and I think that is something that should be supported by this board. Thank you.
Alicia, and then I'll add myself at the end again.
Thanks. Actually, Laurel kind of hit my point. Sorry if it sounded like I said, hey, we haven't been following, let's not follow it anymore. I think those are two separate issues. We haven't followed it, we've not done a good job. It's not an easy policy to read, but I don't think accepting this today is outside the policy. The policy is silent on that. Do I sound like, you know, I listen to a lot of lawyer shows? But the policy does not address it, so I'm not sure we would be violating the policy. And I agree with you, my two rocks do not make a right, but I don't think that's the case here. I think that is very confusing and very, you know, it's, it's too bad we already, we didn't take care of this at the front end. But, but those are my two points. It's okay, this one, and revisit the policy and do a better job with it. That's what I would say. Thanks.
So I, 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 just looking at the policy, and I'm happy to read it again. I don't see anywhere that holds space for coaching or other similar activities. And I know, I am curious if we've consulted an attorney about how this would be perceived as compensation. And I'm also remembering that last year, the attorney we did consult said that we couldn't receive compensation for therapy. And I couldn't agree more that this has been a toxic environment. But in that case, that would mean that seven of us are entitled to $5,000 contracts and $10,000, because this would be round two. That would be $70,000 that we're spending on coaching. And, um, I, I, I don't, I don't, I can't go to the community saying that we're spending $70,000 on coaching. Especially when our policy doesn't cover, even mention anything related to coaching support. I see meetings, conferences, or visitations. And I think there must be a reason that it was brought to us instead of just renewed. And I think that we need to honor that and not make assumptions that it's because board members spoke up, because it was brought to the board. Gordon?
I'll just say briefly, I'm, I don't see the policy, and I'm totally happy to have a conversation, and I hope will not be tonight, but some later point about revisiting that policy. I, I'm concerned about potential conflict of interest. I don't know, I would like to hear from the attorney. I don't know what it means to say, somebody with someone's attorney, and now we're paying them to do something else, and then maybe in future, they'll be their attorney again. And also, $400 an hour, to me, sounds like attorney fees and not like coach fees. And at a time when we're, you know, talking about, can we afford another EA here and there in different classrooms to say, board members are gonna be paying $400 an hour for coaching? Just, I don't know, it's not something I feel comfortable with right now. Thank you.
Judy?
Maybe we should just vote on it. Call the question, we gotta, we have the motion on the table.
We do have the motion on the table. Are you calling the question?
That's a call of a question, yeah.
All those in favor of calling the question, raise your hand and say aye. All those opposed? Well, it passes unanimously. The votes from Meyer Basa, Gordon Laker, Michelle Shu, Judy Newman, Alicia Hayes, and Laurel LaRocque. So we call the question, all those in favor of renewing the contract with Eris, with Impact Coaching from Eris Conflict Resolution. Raise your hand and say aye. All those opposed? Raise your hand and say nay. The motion fails with three ayes and three nays. With ayes from Laurel LaRocque, Alicia Hayes, and Judy Newman, and nays from Meyer Basa, Gordon Laker, and Michelle Shu. Alicia, do you want to make a motion about the policy?
Thanks. I would just, I, do I make a motion now, or do I do it at the end of the meeting when I make a suggestion to get three votes that we revise this policy? I think I do it.
If you don't have motion to make, and you just want to start working on revising the policy, wait till the end of the meeting?
I'm gonna wait till the end of the meeting. Thanks.
Okay. In that case, we move on to the next item for action, which is returning to the consent agenda, item number two. Well, no, sorry, it was three and four. So, would, Judy, I'm looking at you, would you like to make a motion regarding consent agenda, item number three?
Yes, I, I move that we approve the contract. I'm looking to see which one that is, item three. That is-
Contract-
On the bond council.
Yeah, Mercer Shannon.
Mm-hmm. I move that we approve the bond council, the contract for the bond council with Mercer- Sir Shannon. Thank you.
Is there a second? Alicia seconds. So Judy lives to approve the bond council with Mercer Shannon, and Alicia seconds it. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to speak to the motion and why I pulled it off. I just have, I think, a simple question. I was reading the consent agenda, and I was reading the contract, which I didn't really understand fully. And it occurred to me that, that we haven't, I haven't asked if this has been reviewed by an attorney, and I would like to just have that question answered. And I couldn't necessarily do it on the consent question, so I will ask Superintendent Di if it has been reviewed.
All of the, that contract is legally sound. All of our contract templates were reviewed by legal, excuse me, all of our contract templates and notices of solicitation have been reviewed by legal counsel. And so, this would be, the answer would be yes.
Okay, thank you. That's, yeah. And so, can we assume going forward, since we don't, well, that, that's just stick with this one. Okay.
Alicia?
You threw a nuanced word in there, Dr. Di. All our templates. So all our contracts aren't, aren't reviewed, but all our, you know, because we just talked about a contract, and we said, was it reviewed by legal? You know, so, so I'm just curious.
All of our contracts follow a particular template with terms and conditions that have in them the legal protections that we, that legal counsel believes that we need in our contracts. So when, when you've got the specific, where I'm looking for, service agreements and the list of services that they provide and we provide, that's not reviewed by legal counsel, but what binds us in the contract, what allows us to stay in the contract or get out of the contract is pre-standard, and the T's and C's is what we says, which is our contract template. We do not send to legal counsel at the view of each individual contract, but the template on which that contract is based is then approved by legal counsel.
Okay, so the template has, but the, in, so, alright. So they, so we still could question whether a contract is legal, or parts of the contract are legal, but the template that is being used is what's been approved. And I only ask this because I know we just dealt with it, and we know it's coming up. So, that's why. Thanks.
Are there any other questions or comments? Judy?
Okay, so, so if there was a contract we developed that didn't necessarily fit our template, would we send it out to legal? For, or, or does everything fit, or are they individualized? I mean, that's, I think I get, I guess I'm wondering how far out of a template you'd go before you would seek some approval.
Katrina's on her way up. She'd like to-
Great.
...offer some information from her perspective, as long as she can. That's true. Off to you.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Judy, for those questions. Normally, we would submit any changes to our standard templates for the T's and C's or terms and conditions to an attorney prior to agreeing with them or to them for any individual contractor. And we typically would do that during the solicitation process, so that any amendments would be offered to any awarded contractor, and not just a specific contractor, just to keep the playing field well.
Are there any other questions or comments? Anybody who hasn't spoken at all, or not twice? Okay, in that case, all those in favor of approving the bond council contract with Mercer Shannon, raise your hand and say aye. All those opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Laurel, did you want to vote aye or nay?
Aye, sorry, I'm sleepy.
The motion passes unanimously with ayes from Meyer Basa, Gordon Laker, Michelle Shu, Laurel LaRocque, Alicia Hayes, and Judy Newman. Next, we have item four, which is approve the private alternative education services agreement 23-088. Judy, would you like to make a motion for this one?
That we approve the contract for the private alternative education services agreement 23088.
Alicia seconds. Is there, so the motion is to approve the private alternative education services agreement number 23088, moved by Judy Newman and seconded by Alicia Hayes. Is there any discussion?
I had the same question, which is why I pulled both of them. And so, I know this is a really different-looking contract, but it's another template that was approved. Is that correct, that it follows legally, so we could say it's had legal scrutiny?
Yeah, the, the differences between this contract and the contract that the board signed last year and years prior are the dates over which the contract is executed, the dollar amounts that we pay for the services provided, and they're changing their name, the name of the organization from Looking, to Looking Glass Academy, from stepping stone and pathways, girls and boys, and parole or vacation diversion. So they needed to do business under that new name with the new costs and the new dates for the execution of the contract.
Okay, and so that previous contract, I assume, had been vetted. So, okay.
Are there any other questions or comments? In that case, all those in favor of approving the private alternative education services agreement number 23-008, raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Looking on my screen, I think we, I think Laurel has left the meeting. So for record-keeping purposes, I should have mentioned Kirthee. Also, I did mention Kirthee. There are five ayes of the remaining board members of the meeting. Meyer Basa, Gordon Laker, Michelle Shu, Alicia Hayes, and Judy Newman passes unanimously. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but now we move to items for information, of which we have three tonight. The first is Legislative Board Subcommittee Standing Item for Information During the Current Session.
I, I would just suggest, I'm happy if people were happy with the written update Kirthee and I did last time. We can just send it to everyone, and we will be submitting a letter on something around student health services and mental health, but that's within our priorities.
Okay, thank you. So without objection, we'll move on and receive that in, in written form. Speak up now if you object. Okay, the next item was actually struck from the meeting to be postponed to a future meeting. And then the third item is board member communication and calendar protocols. And I have you, Andy Di, listed as the presenter, so I will pass it over to you.
Sure. Three board members voted on March 1st to place the, excuse me, place this item on the agenda for discussion. We provided a copy of the board policies that we believed were related to this topic of conversation. And as I understand, there was a desire to have a conversation generally about board member attendance. That, I could be mistaken, but the, the specific request that I recall was that there be some type of publicly visible calendar that indicated what meetings which board members were going to attend. If I misrepresent somebody, please correct me if I'm wrong. I, I didn't bring this up, so I don't know that I have a great deal of what I had in that. I didn't bring this up, so I don't know that I have a great idea what to add in that.
That sounds great. Is there, is there any questions or discussion? Alicia?
Thanks. You know, Jim Torrey, when he was on the board, he used to say, we're seven equal members, but some of us are a little more equal than others. And it used to, he used to call that out often about leadership, particularly when he wasn't in leadership. And I, I'm getting that sense with this board. And I, I think that's why I backed having this conversation. It's just back to a conversation about how we behave or how we communicate as a board. And, and I, I know it's 11 o'clock at night and this may be better served at a retreat. But it is hard for me when I hear that board members are attending meetings that I, I just don't understand why we would have leadership or we would have any board members there. And, and even when we're there and we say there are no decisions being made, we know as board members, when we question or, you know, ponder or even go, hmm, that smart staff people are paying attention to that. Not even, doesn't, don't need to say smart, staff people, staff in general, I know because I spent 32 years doing it, are paying attention to that and shift behavior or even shift what they might propose. So we do have effect. And, and so I will give the example, and I don't even know the name of the committee that I know I talked to Dr. Di about, and he said it was a committee that was looking at, I believe, how you make decisions or it's a learning group. And what I heard is that Gordon has been there and Maya has been there, maybe just once, maybe not consistently. And I think Michelle, and my question, and then when I asked, it was like, well, we were all invited, but I don't even know when it meets. So there's a miscue about who gets invited to what meeting. And, and that if it said once, then everybody feels invited, but some people get invited because other people are in leadership and they know about it. It's just not consistency. So it goes back to, we are seven equal board members, some of us are a little more equal than others, and we need to work on correcting that. That is what I brought it up for. And again, this may be better served at a retreat and not at 11 o'clock at night. But I wanted to be clear about what my goal was at having this conversation.
Judy?
Yeah. I think Alicia pretty much covered most of what I was going to say. The only thing I'd add is if we, if, if that's something as a board, we all agree we want to do is be able to attend some of these meetings and it works with the superintendent, then I think we need to have some kind of mechanism to say when the meetings are. So again, so four of us don't show up at a meeting or three of us so that there's some way we know which meetings they are, when they're scheduled, and who's planning to go. So that's, that is a bigger discussion, and I think that also impacts our superintendent.
Gordon?
I would just like to suggest that we put this on the agenda for our retreat. And, and my only request is for, you know, Alicia, Judy, or anybody else to bring actual examples. Because I just don't, I have no objection to what you're saying and no idea really what you're talking about. I don't know what that example was that Alicia was talking about, I'm not aware of anything like that. But I'm totally, but I totally agree if there are things that are open to board members, everybody should know. So, so I would like to do it not at 11 o'clock at night. It does seem like a thing that's totally appropriate to board retreat. And to the extent that there's, that there are concrete examples or concerns or whatever, the more concrete the better. Because I'm not, I think I agree in principle, I don't know what's specific, sorry, thank you.
Alicia?
Real quick, Dr. Di, what is the meeting that you guys just talked about? And I think you even talked about this, this kind of funding, where you have cabinet members and you, I know, Maya, I talked to you about it, you said you guys had a chance to look at one. What'd you say, it was Renee Brown? So that's the meeting I'm talking about, Gordon. And there may be more, that's just the one I'm addressing. It sounds like you know which one it is now, and I'm good with that, you don't need to, don't need to answer, thanks.
Michelle? I, I heard my name thrown in there and I, I don't know what, I have no idea what you're referring to. I, I have never attended a meeting.
Any other?
All right, thanks, we can, we can, you know, unwrap this a little more another time, thanks.
That sounds fine, we'll put this on the agenda for our retreat. And I think that we can address it as a question of, I think it was on here as a board member communication. And I assume that means with staff, which also had come up before. So it might be a nice time to discuss the, a calendar question and board member communication with staff. I found the policies that were linked in our board book to be pretty insightful, even though I'd read them before, just thinking about the interactions that we've had with staff this year. There were a number of things that came up for me as, as concerning. So I appreciate that this is brought forward. So that means that we are finally getting to items for action at a future meeting. And we have two of these. The book and instructional materials challenge policy. I see Rob listed as the person, I don't see Rob here. I'm wondering if, I'm seeing that it's 11 o'clock at night, I'm wondering if we might be better served pushing this back, but, go ahead, Gordon.
Unless the superintendent wants to speak to this, I, Judy, especially I don't know what your thoughts, go ahead. And I know we have this as, this is, we have this in writing and it's something we deferred already from a previous meeting. It's, it's based on an AR we've already adopted and now we're just talking about adopting it as policy. And so I'm okay putting it off, but I would like to get it done, so.
Yeah, can I respond really quickly to that? Can I suggest, when I say put it off, it's an item for future action. I mean, we will have to take action on it, perhaps when we take action at our next meeting.
Okay, do we put it off?
We could have, we could, we could hold time there for a discussion that would need to happen.
Or do we, or do we come back as an item for action?
Yeah.
Okay, terrific, thank you.
Judy?
So can I ask one question about it now, or do you want me to wait until next meeting?
Go for it, let's just jump.
I, I just, I'm wondering, does that mean it'll go away as an AR? Because it seems silly to have a duplication of a policy and an administrative rule the same. So are we going to then move it from AR to policy? And I, I assume you're wanting to do that so it has a little more authority, harder to change. But I wouldn't want to have identical things in both places. We can answer that in the next discussion, but that's my question.
The board, I'll make this as concise as possible. Because the board approved an element of IIAR on the consent agenda, it cannot be changed by administration. The board has to approve any changes to that administrative rule. And so what we changed the last time, or was the library book, language around how library books challenge process is, but it was one AR. And so if you'll recall, at the end of last year and earlier this year, we talked about some changes potentially needing to be paid to the manner in which we adopt instructional materials or curriculum. So in order to do that, we would have to go back and change that AR again. So in short answer, yes, if it was, the decision was going to be that this AR was going to be turned into policy or if there was going to be something changed about this AR, my recommendation would be that the board takes action and then that AR is eliminated or that part of the AR is eliminated, so there's no duplication like what you just referenced. That wouldn't make a lot of sense.
Are there any more questions or can we push this into item for action and then hold the discussion then? Okay, I'm not hearing any objections. In that case, the last item for future action is board meeting security measures, which, you know, we've discussed extensively. Are there questions around those board meeting security measures? Or are we okay to take this into item for action at our next meeting? Okay, you're okay with that, Alicia? Okay, I just asked because you were muted and I saw you talking.
You couldn't read my lips, good to move it forward.
Okay, great. In that case, are there suggestions by the board for consideration of items at future meeting? I'm going to go ahead and call on you, Alicia, because I know you got one.
Yeah, I have one, can I remember it? It is to review and update policy BHD.
I am raising my hand in support, are there any other raised hands in support? I'm going over here, okay, there's four of us now that are supporting this, so we'll bring this to leadership to add to future agenda. Are there any other items, Alicia?
So I just want to see if, if I missed it, if we have something on communication, particularly electronic communication. I know we talked about it and I skimmed, so I apologize if I missed it, it's, it's, it's set. And also then just really ask that we figure out where the best place is to have, at least start the conversation about what is our relationship with EPD? And do we have, should we be doing more with EPD in terms of contracting? Which again, like I said, we dropped it because of COVID, but we need to bring it back and I would really like it done. I have a small timeline left on the board, so I would love to have the ability to have that conversation. So those are just two that, they, they already moved forward, I just wanted to know if you could get them on the agenda.
Okay, my understanding about the electronic communications, that there was something, I believe, in the works for possibly April, is that right? Okay, so we only have one meeting in April, so that narrows it down easily. And the EPD consultation, we will, I'm taking note that it needs to be talked about at this leadership. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Are there any other items for information, I mean, items to suggest for future agendas? In that case, our next regular board meeting is scheduled for April 19th. Keep an eye out for a doodle poll. However, I'm hoping that folks save April 12th, which is a Wednesday, for part of our retreat. We'll do it in two sessions so we don't have to do it eight hours a day. But we'll have to figure out the second day because we don't have other Wednesdays available to us. So please keep the evening of Wednesday, April 12th for retreat. April 19th is our next regular board meeting. This meeting is adjourned at 11:12 PM.